Hello. I call the June 13th, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting to Order. City Clerk Ben Lane, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor David Ortega.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kathy Littlefield.
Present.
Councilmembers Tammy Caputi.
Here.
Tom Durham.
Here.
Barry Graham.
Here.
Betty Janik.
Here.
And Solange Whitehead.
Here.
City Manager Jim Thompson.
Here.
City Attorney Sherry Scott.
Here.
City Treasurer Sonia Andrews.
Here.
Acting City Auditor Leclaff.
Here.
And the Clerk is present. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. We have Scottsdale Police Officer Sergeant Sean Rong, as well as Detective Dustin Patrick, and Officer Ryan Lowing, as well as firefighter Lane Henning. If anyone needs assistance, also, I will point out, the restrooms are through that opening up on the men's line, up on the upper level. At this point, we will... Councilwoman Betty Janik, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I do want to call our attention to the war in Ukraine, and remember the ongoing sacrifice and fight for freedom by the people of Ukraine. Thank you. Well, last month, City of Scottsdale recognized the passing of Mayor Bill Schrader. Bill Schrader was the third mayor of Scottsdale, and the first two were selected by other council members, but he was the first elected mayor of Scottsdale. We have a commemoration for us to view. Bill was a pioneer of family here in Scottsdale. Scottsdale wouldn't be what it is without Mayor Schrader. Essentially, in the 60s, there were annexation wars, and Mayor Schrader got word that the Scottsdale Airport and the areas north would be annexed by Phoenix. And working over the weekend, he contacted his own council, got signatures of DC Ranch. Imagine all the owners of DC Ranch, over close to 30,000 acres north of Scottsdale, and prevented Phoenix from being, from really cutting us off at the pass. Later, he served as president of Salt River Project, and worked up an agreement, the first of its kind, where Salt River Project signed with Mayor Herb Drinkwater, the agreement for the canal improvements at what's now known as a waterfront. So that was signed in 1986, renewed, it was a 35-year lease, and it was just recently renewed for another 40 years. These are ways where a mayor acted very proactively, and certainly, the vision that he had is so commendable. We have with us his granddaughter, Jennifer Schrader, and, yes, please do, and we're so happy to see you here. There was a very large family gathering and a celebration of his life. And I think I would just conclude to say, you know, there is a landmark called Schrader's Pond, and Schrader's Pond is the only, it's actually an unlined pond, it's not concreted or guniteed, and it does very well. And it's also the place where thousands of people were baptized. So that's how it was done in the old days, and it remains today kind of a great tribute to man and his family. So thank you for being here, Jennifer, and convey, you know, our best wishes to the family. Next, we will go to the city manager's report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have a short video.
Hi, I'm Public Affairs Specialist Stephanie Harada, with five fast things happening around the city you need to know. Starting us off at number five, June Days is here. It's a month-long Scottsdale celebration you'll wish was even longer. Enjoy all the things that make Old Town unique. Daily activities and events include wine tastings, art exhibits, crafting workshops, live performances, and family-oriented outings. Plan your June Days at OldtownScottsdaleaz.com. Coming in at number four, the Organization of World Heritage Cities recently granted Scottsdale membership among an elite group of cities that are home to UNESCO World Heritage Sites. With this acceptance, the organization recognizes Scottsdale as the location of Frank Lloyd Wright's desert home and laboratory, Taliesin West, and welcomes the city as an active participant in international efforts to protect and preserve the heritage of mankind. Established in 1937, Wright's winter home in the foothills of the McDowell Mountains was forged from the natural elements of the desert, with most of the labor done by the architect and his apprentices, making it one of his most personal works and a premier example of organic architecture. It stands today as one of the region's most beloved attractions, with sprawling views of the Valley of the Sun, open to the public with tours and special events throughout the year. The site has been on the National Register of Historic Places since 1974, was designated as a national historic landmark in 1982, and was added to the Scottsdale Historic Register in 2006. Next up at number three, Scottsdale Water shares summer watering guidance. Did you know most landscapes are overwatered? Desert landscapes should be watered no more than twice a week. Landscape also should be watered between 7:00 PM to 10:00 AM. Watering during cooler hours maximizes plant care and limits evaporation. Learn more at Scottsdaleaz.gov and search desert plant care. At number two, Scottsdale's Free Community Juneteenth Celebration, presented by Mayo Clinic, is backed by popular demand on June 17. Hosted by the city and Scottsdale Arts, the afternoon of culture, entertainment, music, wellness, presentations, and career opportunities takes place from 2:00 to 7:00 PM at the Scottsdale Center for the Performing Arts and Scottsdale Civic Center. Parking and admission are free, including access to the Scottsdale Museum of Contemporary Art. We hope to see you there. Wrapping things up at number one, let's talk about weather safety. Summer monsoons are active mid-June through late September, and often bring thunderstorms with heavy rain, flash flooding, dust storms, and lightning, which can cause wildfires. Now is a good time to prepare. Develop a household emergency plan and consider items you would need to take and routes you may need to travel in the event of an emergency evacuation. In the event of an emergency, look for ready, set, go messages on social networks and in the news media. What is ready, set, go? Be ready, always be prepared for potential emergencies, get set by maintaining awareness of events that may force evacuation, and go evacuate immediately when instructed by emergency authorities. Stay alert and safe this monsoon. And that's Scottsdale's Fast Five for June. Thanks for watching.
Well, thank you very much. Next, for the benefit of those attending, during tonight's meeting, the council may make a motion to recess into executive session to obtain legal advice on any applicable item on the agenda. If authorized by the council, the executive session will be held immediately and will not be open to the public. The public meeting will resume following the executive session. Also, per our council rules of procedure, citizens attending city council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to members of the council and city staff. Unauthorized remarks or demonstrations from the audience, such as applause, stamping of feet, whistles, boos, yells, and/or other demonstrations shall not be permitted. Violation of these rules could result in removal from the meeting by security staff. And really, we just try to keep the meeting flowing so it's efficient, time-efficient for everyone, so we ask you to observe that. Next, we're coming to public comment. Public comment is reserved for Scottsdale citizens, business owners, and/or property owners to comment on non-agendized items that are within the council's jurisdiction. Advocacy for or against a candidate or a ballot measure during a council meeting is not allowed pursuant to state law and is therefore not deemed to be within the council's jurisdiction. No official council action can be taken on these items, and speakers are limited to three minutes to address the council. We take at the beginning, a public comment. You're limited to three minutes, and we have five participants, so I'll call your name and hopefully you'll be aware of the next couple as well. Please state your name, place of residence, and then proceed with your public comment. Dan Isak, and then Carly Kramer, then we'll have Marissa Hamilton.
Dan Isak, address on record, mayor, vice mayor, and council. I genuinely hoped that I wasn't going to need to speak again, but my efforts to try to moderate Mr. Grayham's behavior have failed. At the last meeting, once again, we had to suffer through Mr. Grayham's mistreatment of staff via what can only be characterized as interrogation and cross-examination. Now, as a fellow fiscal conservative, I applaud Mr. Grayham's desired but more discipline and scrutiny around our financial decisions. It is now, during a time of strength, that one should review procedures and spending for improvement opportunities. However, Mr. Grayham's methods are inappropriate. No, they're actually offensive. I do not understand how he thinks the city will make meaningful change by beating up staff and asking the same question multiple times to try to get an answer that will allow him to thump his chest in victory. More puzzling was his interrogation on proposed user fee increases, which were not new to him, nor to the rest of the council, nor to any resident who had been paying attention. Yet he tried to paint the city as money-grubbing and going after residents' money via user fees. In reality, a true fiscal hawk would prefer user fees rather than broad-based tax increases or service cuts. Moreover, it is unimaginable that Mr. Grayham is unaware that the cost of providing city services has increased. As an accountant and a council member who sat through hours of city budget meetings, was it a surprise to him that we, like any other city or business, have wage and benefit pressures? Gas is more expensive for our city vehicles, unless he drives an EV, which I doubt he knows that. Virtually all supplies and materials have increased in cost. I don't think that Mr. Grayham is unintelligent or uninformed, so why won't the city increase fees? His protests are for political theater. Lastly, he seems to have forgotten the number of services and benefits that the city provides with no direct user fees. I think he knows parking is still free, uncommon for downtowns of cities of our size. He must know that access to our senior centers and many of their activities are free. How about the trolley? Access to our parks? Or how about the many events the city sponsors for holidays and other special occasions, which are free for residents and families? So why the repeated question, trying to get our staff to say all fees are increasing? Again, it's theater. Mr. Grayham, I already congratulated you on your well-earned victory, but I will once again implore you to stop campaigning for your next rung. Stop pandering to your constituents. Stop thumping your chest. Please treat our staff with respect and do your job. The city deserves it, even if you don't want to do it. Thank you.
Next, we have Carly Kramer, Marissa Hamilton, and Linda Scorzo.
Hi, my name's Carly Kramer. I live in Scottsdale, Arizona, 85250. I've lived there since I was three years old. I've lived in the townhouse that I live in for over 20 years. In those 20 years, I have never called the police, nor have I reported anything to my HOA. In November, I had two of the unlicensed sober living that we see all over the news pop up in back of me. The gist of it is that people are taking Native American people under the guise of helping them in a sober living community, and they are moving them into homes. They are moving a lot of them into homes. They are moving children into the homes, they are moving as many bodies as they can fit into these homes. On a side note, I have been through recovery. I also work in criminal justice reform, so I know that there is a need for these types of homes in communities. When done appropriately... That's not what is happening in the two homes behind me. The man that runs these homes and his associates, they have multiple homes. I have followed them. I have a huge paper trail. These people, they have unregistered cars. They, the man who runs both of these homes, I saw him come home at 3:00 in the morning with one of the women, with a woman who could not, who was so wasted, she could barely get into her home. When he finally got her into the home, my window is on the second story, I can see into their house, he was undressing her and he was all over her, so I called Scottsdale PD, they came. The woman said it was consensual, and so they could not do anything about it, but regardless, if this is licensed, unlicensed, whatever, this man is taking advantage of very vulnerable people in a home, and that is not appropriate behavior, no matter what goes on. That woman has since died. Ever since she died, he comes, he does not live in the home anymore. He comes once every few days. I have developed relationships with the people that live in these homes. They say her stuff is still in there, and they know nothing. I have reported this to the health board. I have reported this to the police. I have called the tribes that they belong to. I have called Native American advocates. I can get no help from these people, for these people. The cops have been there three times this week. They're still not taking these people out of the houses. They are still not helping these people. These people don't have air conditioning, they have the windows open when it's this hot. And you see on the news, they're so mad that they've taken all this money from access, and they're shutting it down, but nothing has changed in these two homes. And I need you guys to call Scottsdale PD and ask them to do something. This is an FBI issue. They are crossing state lines. This is insurance fraud. There is so much criminal activity going on here, and these people need help.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer, and we will make sure the PD will follow up with you before you leave, and look at those files in a follow-up. Next, we have Marissa Hamilton, Linda Scorzo, and Lee Cofteal.
Hello, my name is Marissa Hamilton. I am a member-at-large for this region, for one of the political parties, and we are headquartered here in Scottsdale. I am talking to you today in support of your small businesses that are in the area. I've spoken to many of them this week about concerns that MAG has a, your regional transportation planner, has a project that they've assigned for Scottsdale Road. As you know, Scottsdale Road, especially in this downtown area, is very narrow. You don't have a dedicated center-turning lane, and the businesses already suffer from a significant amount of traffic congestion depending on the time of day. The business owners have let me know about their concerns about traffic congestion, and they are concerned that a two-to-three-year lengthy construction project that MAG has planned for Bus Rapid Transit would severely impact their businesses, especially foot traffic. We saw this happen in downtown Phoenix, in South Phoenix especially, and this caused many of our businesses, our small businesses, to go out of business permanently, businesses that had been there for decades. And so, my concern in talking to these small businesses is that by putting in this Bus Rapid Transit plan, taking out two to three lanes of the road, making it dedicated bus lanes, is going to significantly, permanently impede on the foot traffic for those small businesses. I spoke to a candy store today that had been there for 12 years, and they said they will not survive this. You need to, I'm urging you to provide some stability for your small business owners. I know commitments were made that the downtown would not be disrupted, and they need to hear from you. They need to know whether or not you support this MAG plan, if this plan is on hold, what your decisions are going to be on it, but please, keep your businesses informed, keep it transparent, protect your small businesses. They are vital to your economic stability here in Scottsdale, and if you continue to do road diets, you are going to continue to disenfranchise your citizens and your small businesses. So I highly recommend that you take a different course. MAG is not an elected body here, they are actually a nonprofit. They were created in 1960 by the federal government with a program that the federal government called coercive federalism. The reason why they called it coercive federalism is because MAG is designed to take federal dollars, attach hostile strings that your own public will not support, and use you to override the will of the people. So please, keep this in mind. MAG shouldn't really exist. You should have full control of your local transportation dollars, and please protect your small businesses. I do have a report of a study of the proposal and how it will impact your small businesses if you are interested in receiving it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Scorzo will pass, so we'll move on to Lee Cofteal, and then Edward Kearns will be the final speaker of the group.
Hi there. My name is Lee Cofteal. I live on Thomas Road, 7726 East Thomas Road. I wanted to talk because I was at the last city council meeting, and there was a lot of things said, and it made me think of a lot of things, and I just wanted to offer those comments. One of the things it reminded me of is I had a roommate who lived with me for a long time. We would walk past the green belt, and after our rains, it would flood, and he asked me just offhandedly, "Why don't they build the sewer to be bigger, so that the green belt doesn't flood and doesn't force us to walk and other things?" My response to that is, "You don't build for the exception, you build for what's normal." And so, I see that related to all the talk about road diets, or repaving, repainting, or any of those other subjects, where I live on Thomas, I think I know Thomas's traffic better than just about anybody here except for city staff. And so, most of the time, when I'm on 68th, when I'm on Thomas, there is very little traffic. It is overbuilt, and there is an hour or so, two hours each day, where there is a lot of traffic, and the rest of the time, there is very little. When I am on Thomas, I don't have the freedom to take my bike from, to the east, to the westbound. After I cross over Scottsdale Road, there is no more bike lane, and I'm forced into aggressive drivers who will not give me the space, or I'll be forced onto the sidewalk, where I will be forced to interact with pedestrians and force them to move or interact with other cars. I hear people talk about the need for data. I've been to the Transportation Committee meetings, and they have shown that over the past 20 years, since the, since the loop's been built, there has not been increase in the traffic on these roads, despite the fact that Scottsdale's population has increased by over 100,000 in those past 20 years. And so, I hear the concerns about 10,000 new apartment buildings being built, and I question why we need more data when we already have 20, 20 years of data showing that the Loop 101 and the 202 system is doing exactly what it is supposed to do. In the past, we've had three other of these road reclassifications, these road diets, which has caused no problems for anybody, and it's just something that's coming up now. By, when I'm on Thomas, when I'm riding on Thomas, when I'm walking on Thomas, when I'm driving on Thomas, the people I see on bikes are not the people that are here talking a lot of times, saying how this is a terrible decision for this city. And I ask that the council consider those people who are not here today, for whatever reason, that they're not able to make their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Edward Kearns, who's the last speaker on this segment of public comment.
Yeah, I'm Edward Scott Kearns, the president and CEO of Christian International Air Vac. That's the reason I'm here today, on behalf of Christian International Air Vac, and I need some help. I don't know where the city council has anything to say about the airport. I've been operating out of there over 50 years, and they blackballed me. Can't even walk on it, can't even get on it. Maybe you all don't have any control over the airport out there. I thought you did. Anyway, that's the reason I'm here today, and I had an airplane stolen off this airport, and everybody knows about it. Pat Brown's the one that stole it and hid it, and the left wing got ahold of it, was the FBI. They come out here and got it and flew it back east after night and totaled it. Well, that's a still ongoing situation. Airplane still belongs to me. I know where it is. It's got a white title on it. White title means it's a title signed to somebody that didn't have the authority to do it. Anyway, I've got a big problem there. Now then, CIA operates out of Mexico mostly. I have a place down there, and my secretary's from Penasco, Penasco County, which has no part of the rest of the state. Penasco County is separate. Anyway, a lot of people don't know that. Well, I have an office down there, and Valenti Carnardo is the secretary. He's not here tonight because he had a funeral today and his family, his wife's sister died. Anyway, I need some help. I don't know where you, people can help me in any way or not, or where you have any control over the people that's so-called running the airport. You know, the ones that's over there in the position to...
Well, thank you, Mr. Kearns, and is there any other concluding? We have your contact information, should you need to follow up. Correct? You left that with clerk? We don't, we don't have any of your information, but we got your message, so you may need to leave additional information as far as the crime scene, or whatever may be necessary. At this point, we're concluded, so if you wish to leave some information with our security officers... we're concluded, so if you wish to leave some information with our security officer, please do so. Thank you very much, sir.
Will I be able to leave some information with him?
Yes.
Okay. I've got plenty of it.
Thank you, sir. Be well.
And we can do that right after the meeting?
Yep. We're gonna, just getting started. So thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, brother.
So at this point, I will close public comment, and we will move on to the approval of the minutes. First of all, we, I would request a motion to approve regular meeting and work-study meeting session minutes of April 25, 2023, regular and special meetings minutes of May 2, executive session minutes of May 2, 2023, and regular meeting and work-study session minutes of May 16, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Please record your vote. Thank you. Unanimous. Next, we're going to move on to consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are all backed up with file information. They include items 1 through 19, and we do invite the public to comment on any of the consent agenda items. In this particular case, someone is requesting to speak about item number 6, Miller Road, Pinnacle Peak Road to Happy Valley Road construction bid. I also have a request by someone to speak, again, public comment, on item 11. That would be the Arizona State Route 101 Traffic Interchanges Intergovernment Agreement. So let me start with calling forth Dan Lundberg and regarding the Pinnacle Peak and Miller, Miller to Happy Valley Road on Miller. Can you come forward, sir? Okay. Sometimes people register early, and appears that there's, that individual has moved on. So, to be clear, also, we have an opportunity to hear from, regarding item number 1, Mike Peterson of Scottsdale. If you would please come forward. He wants to speak about the Arizona State Route 101 Traffic Interchanges. Thank you, sir. State your name and address and continue.
Mike Peterson, and my address is on your form.
Good. Thank you.
May I begin?
Yes. Proceed.
Ladies and gentlemen of Scottsdale City Council, item number 11 on the consent agenda, you will also find on item number 25, both of them are for the state, the state central capital tax is providing the funding for both of those, as stated in the agenda items, and what they clearly are, are road diets. It's essentially taking a failed system from Scottsdale. We're copying Phoenix. We're imitating Phoenix. This is the most west city in the West, the greatest-run city in America, a very proud community, and here we are imitating failure by taking the failed policies of Phoenix and applying them on a local level, by using taxes to do it. And then if you end up congesting traffic, you're not going to have the foot traffic in downtown, old-town Scottsdale that pretty much is your bread and butter. Scottsdale isn't Phoenix. Scottsdale needs people to be able to travel, people to be able to travel on foot, transportation options. And forcing people to park outside of town, or forcing people to use public transit that is clearly unreliable and has a long history of unreliability are both failed systems that will cause businesses to leave town or just simply fall apart. And we're better than this. We shouldn't be copying Phoenix. We should be having them copy us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Regarding item 11, since we just had some testimony, we have a request to see that presentation. Is that correct? Yes. So we're going to get that presentation made by staff, and it still remains on the consent agenda, but we will have more information to review here.
Thank you, Mayor Ottega, city council members. My name is Nathan Domi. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager for the city of Scottsdale. And this evening, I'm going to talk about the state, the Arizona State Route 101 Interchanges Project. I'll also talk about the intergovernmental agreement for, with ADOT, and the overview of the approvals being made to the interchanges. I'm going to start with a summary of the requests we're making towards council tonight. So we're, staff is looking to approve the intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for the modifications of the traffic interchanges. We are also requesting two budget transfers to account for inflation costs on construction and right-of-way acquisition for the project. One will be 2.6 million for the interchange improvements, and the second will be 666,000 for the landscaping and aesthetics on the retaining walls. So the purpose and need of this project is to improve traffic flow on Loop 101 by adding additional travel lanes, increase capacity to accommodate existing and future traffic volumes, and improve interchanges to increase transfers to and from the freeway. The general improvements, the overall improvements of the Loop 101, these are two separate projects that are combining during the construction phases. The first project is adding the one general-purpose lane in each direction, shown in orange on the map. This is an ADOT project and is separate from the IGA with the city. It is being managed and funded by ADOT. The second project is the interchange improvements at Pima Road, Frank Lloyd Wright Boulevard, Rain Tree Drive, and Shea Boulevard. This is an arterial lifecycle project coordinated between MAG and the city. The project has been combined with ADOT's project so that the construction can happen in tandem. In addition, the project, our project is adding improvements to the freeway wall's aesthetics. This is a city-funded improvement 20 years ago, and the city of Scottsdale requested that it be added to the overall project to restore the art elements to their original quality and replace parts that are being removed during the highway widening. Thanks. The IGA is establishing that ADOT will manage the whole project, both the interchanges and the widening of the freeway. This will include bidding the project, which will happen later this month, as well as administration throughout the project. The city of Scottsdale is paying 30% of the interchange improvements, while MAG is paying 70% of that interchange improvements. The city of Scottsdale is paying 100% of the aesthetics and landscaping improvements. On the screen, you can see a breakdown of the, the cost estimate increases. The, in the chart, the, the upper part of the chart is the budget for the interchange improvements. You can see the original budget, the revised estimate, and then the budget change. The original estimate for the interchange improvements was 5.7 million. ADOT's latest estimate had an 8.3 million, a $2.6 million increase. Breaking it down, the regional contribution sales tax would assume 1.8 million of that, and our local 1%, 0.1% sales tax would assume $778,000. Then the additional 666,000 that would be needed for the aesthetic and landscaping project would be taken by the Transportation Sales Tax Contingency Fund. This is due, again, to high inflation rates that we've seen post-COVID, as well as higher land values that lead to higher right-of-way acquisition amounts. Now, I want to go into the breakdown of what actually is being improved on the interchanges. So Princess Drive improvements are pretty minimal. What we're adding is 1/3 left turn lane going from Pima Road south down to the southbound 101. It's also adding ADA improvements in purple, as you can see, and then some minor median improvements. Then the biggest changes are happening at the Frank Lloyd Wright interchange. This interchange is changing from being a, a single-point urban interchange, a spooey, to a tight diamond interchange. Now, as you can see on the screen, the aerial, the left turn lanes kind of bend towards the interchange, stopping at a single point right in the middle of that, that large yellow area. That would be what the spooey is, moving all the cars right to the center point. What the change would be, it would be removing those, those left turn lanes and centering them with the rest of the frontage road, and then adding a big area with more left turn bays in the center. What this will do is reduce conflict points at the intersection, reduce traffic, crash rates, and improve, reduce congestion and improve the overall level of service for the interchange. It will also come with improved pedestrian accommodations along the Frank Lloyd Wright, shown in purple, as well as the median and ADA improvements. That is the largest sum of the money going into that change right there. Then we have minor changes at Rain Tree, adding three additional right turn lanes, going both off of the 101, both eastbound and westbound on Rain Tree Drive, and then on the westbound going on to north 101. It's also including the same ADA improvements, sidewalk improvements, and median improvements. Then Shea Boulevard, we're adding a right turn bay going westbound, going to north 101, as well as the sidewalk improvements and the ADA improvements. And then finally, the landscape improvements. Landscape improvements involve restoring the existing design of the retaining wall between Princess Drive and Shea Boulevard. It will involve restoring the images of agaves, lizards, rock textures, pink and tan bumpouts. It'll also include redoing the same designs on the new retaining walls after ADOT has finished their highway widening.
Now, at this point, we do have a few comments, so I'll mention that if we may, Mr. Domi. And so we'll be hearing from Councilman Janik, Vice Mayor Littlefield, and then Council Member Durham.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Could you do me a favor? Could you go back to the diagram that you have on Frank Lloyd Wright? I looked at all this this morning, and I find it confusing. And what I would like you to do is pretend you're a car on each one of those accesses in yellow, and tell me what direction, how many lanes, what the configuration changes, because to me, it was hard to interpret the diagram. I'm sorry, but it would be very helpful.
Okay. Council, Vice Mayor Littlefield, Councilmember Durham.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of quick questions. There's four major corners that you're looking at redoing here. Are they all going to be done at the same time? Are you going to do them one at a time to allow traffic to flow while one is being repaired?
You mean the four interchanges or four corners at Frank Lloyd Wright?
The four interchanges.
They will be done, not simultaneously, but they'll be, will work with the bid, whoever the construction, the construction company, to work for a way that manages and mitigates as much of the damage. We'd need to maintain access as much as possible.
That has been my concern, is I didn't want all four of these corners to go at one time, and nobody'd be able to get anywhere.
And the improvements to the other three interchanges are pretty minimal, so we can get in there and get those done pretty easily. This one, Frank Lloyd Wright, will take a significant level of construction, and may, we may have to close the ramp for a small amount of time, but we will coordinate that with, with the, the seasons, with waste management, and then other opportunities to make sure we mitigate that as much as possible.
Okay. And I also, I just would like to say, I'm very glad to hear that you're going to continue to have the existing artwork on the freeways. I think that's very, very popular. It's very unique to Scottsdale, and I want to make sure that we keep that art on our freeway sides. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Durham, Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. The money we're talking about tonight that you put up on the screen, is that only for the design aspects of this project?
No, that is the, that is the construction. The design is complete, that is including the design, but the design is completed. We will pay back ADOT for the design, and then that is including the construction. That is a completed project.
Okay. Does that include the additional lane on the 101?
No. That is, that is an ADOT project. This is just the interchanges.
Okay.
That is about $170 million.
Okay. I, that's, I thought it would be a lot more. So ADOT completely pays for the extra lane?
They are, that is their project.
You know, it, you know, I assume they have just figured out, but it just seems to me like it's going to be a difficult project, particularly in the Shea area where the road is sort of lower, how, how to add an extra lane, particularly when we have the retaining walls on each side, but I...
That will include some of the construction elements to remove that retaining wall, but we will work with that as best we can to make sure.
And there, and there's room for that with the...
There is room.
The various properties? Okay.
They will, they will brush that out a little bit, and it'll, there's room.
Okay. All right. That's, that's all I had on this subject. I, I took this off, or I wanted a presentation, just because it's a very big project, obviously, and it's important to the people of Scottsdale, and I just wanted to get a little better picture of what it's going to be about. Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Graham, and myself.
Thank you, Mayor. Nate, thank you for the presentation. So we're not doing any of the project. We're just writing a check. Is that right?
In essence, we are just writing a check, but we are, we have been coordinating with ADOT this whole time, and will continue to coordinate with ADOT to make sure that it goes into city standards.
Okay. And the original budget was 6.8 million, and it's up 50, about 50% to 10 million. Is that right?
That's right.
And would you say that's solely because of construction inflation costs, or any other factors part of that inflationary push?
I would say that it's solely because of construction inflation costs, and then right-of-way costs. The right-of-way costs significantly increased as well.
I mean, like, because you're saying that, like, property's more valuable, so we got to pay more?
Yes.
Who, what, but we're talking about, like, slivers of land and stuff. Like, there's not like a big, like, there aren't bidders for this land. I mean...
Yeah, no, we're not taking whole parcels. We're taking slivers of land at mostly the right turn base.
Yeah. Okay.
But it does cost a lot of money to take parcels, or slivers of land from parcels. It does add up. It's about $2 million for the right-of-way acquisition.
Who do we, who do we buy that from? Is that from the state?
The parcel owners. So the...
Right. Who owns them?
The individual property owners. So there's individual landowners that are next to the right-of-way.
And then for the, MAG covers 70%. Did they, did they cover 70% of the cost increase, or are we, are we absorbing the cost increase?
They are cost, they are assuming 70% of the cost increase.
Okay, good. So that initial, that initial grant is increased from them?
It's, it's not a grant, but it, they are.
A match, yeah.
It's, it's the ALCP funding, so, yeah.
Right. Arterial lifecycle.
We are, we are putting more of the ALCP funding, the 70% into this project.
So if, if, since we're just writing, kind of cutting a check for the project, if there's any more over budget or over, budget overruns, are we on the hook for that, or how does that work?
If there's more project overruns on our project, we would be looking to add more ALCP funds to the project.
Okay. Can you, can you go to the rendering of the Frank Lloyd Wright interchange?
Maybe. I've lost power over here.
So, right now, this is, I think this is kind of a bizarre intersection, and it's probably one of the most congested intersections in the city. What, what do you, what would you say right now is the risk? What, what do you, what would you say right now is the riskiest part of this intersection?
In, in terms of changing it to a tight diamond?
No, um, I'm saying, as its current configuration, what is, we're changing it because there's, we want to improve it. What is the part that is the most, I don't want to say hazardous, but needs improvement the most?
The two leading causes for why we want to change this interchange is the crash rate and the level of service. We can improve the level of service with this change and reduce crashes.
But I'm saying, what, what makes the crash rate so, uh, so much higher? That's what I'm asking?
Um.
Like, is there a certain aspect of the configuration, the way that the lanes are drawn, or?
I'll bring in one of our traffic engineers, and, and he will hopefully.
Oh, wow.
I don't know the particulars of, of each individual crash at this intersection, but he might.
Oh, I was told you did. No, just kidding.
Oh.
Mayor, Councilmember, uh, my name is Kiran Gunthpalay. I'm one of the traffic engineers with the city.
Of course.
Uh, uh, one of the major congestion points on this, uh, this interchange is the left turns, uh, that are happening in both AM and PM peak. Uh, it's the eastbound to northbound left turns that back up into the through lanes that's causing the heavy congestion. With the tight diamond interchange, what, what we're doing is we are increasing the storage capacity of the left turn base, thereby reducing the spill over into the through lanes, and thereby improving the level of service, and also the chance of people re-renting and getting into crashes.
So you're saying that the most dangerous part is when people are, um, turning left, basically? Whether it's to get on or off the freeway?
It's the spill over that's causing, uh, that's backing up into the through lanes is what's causing the congestion.
Could you say that a little slower? It's the what?
The spill over from the left turns.
Spill over.
Is backing up into the through lanes, so it's, uh, the people who are trying to go, uh, eastbound cannot make the through movement, so there's, that's what is causing congestion.
So when, so, so, so you're talking about, for example, going southbound to go, you know, east onto Frank Lloyd Wright? Is, um, is, are you concerned at all about any backups within the actual intersection? Because, I mean, it looks like it's going to hold about eight or 10 cars there?
Uh, it's actually about, uh, total of, uh, two lanes, so about 100 feet of storage.
Okay.
So it's, um, about 20 feet, so it, it holds about decent amount of traffic on, in between the ramps.
Okay, so that, I'm just, this is a very big shift in the configuration of the, of the intersection, so it sounds like you guys.
Yeah.
Studied it very closely.
Uh, during the DCR phase, this interchange was looked upon very extensively, and, uh, the, the, the decision to spend about $5 million on this, uh, interchange was, was not taken lightly. We, we did look at it in a detailed analysis, and the DCR was revised before it went into the design.
$5 million bucks? I hope you got it right.
$5 million for the interchange.
Yeah. Okay, well, that was for my, uh, my risk question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
Thanks.
And then, can you go to the Princess triple lane, triple left turn?
Yeah, maybe.
Is this going to be the city's first triple left, uh, turn, on or off?
I believe so, yes.
So when you get on, so this is to get on to the freeway, southbound, is there going to be three lanes on that, um, on that byway, on that, on that service street?
For a portion of time, and then it's going to narrow down to, to a reduction to get onto the freeway.
So they're going to, they're going to widen that? That's just part of the acquisitions that we're making, correct? Because that's two lanes right now, isn't it? Oh, no, it's three. It's three.
Is it three?
I think it's three, yeah. Yeah, I use that a lot, that's kind of near my office. Um, and you're not concerned at all about the merging of the, from the three lanes to two lanes? You guys feel good about that?
During a lot of our coordination meetings with ADOT, we brought that topic up. We've worked with them, and, and we've gotten to a place where we're comfortable with the merging.
Hope you got it right.
I do, too.
Can you go to the Shea interchange? Now, this is, this to me is a no-brainer, the westbound to get onto the.
Are you looking for Shea or, or Rangery?
I'm sorry, Shea.
Okay, now we're on it.
Yeah, this to me is a no-brainer. Um, my question, though, is, I think Shea, I think the data shows Shea is one of the most congested, especially in this area. Are you doing this because Shea is, uh, under capacity? What's, what's the reason for doing this?
We are trying to increase capacity, at least at the right turn.
Okay. So would you say that Shea is under capacity?
The reason for this is there's a heavy, I'm sorry, my name, again, Kiran with.
Welcome back.
Traffic engineer. Uh, the reason why we are doing it is, uh, right now, the storage length on the, on the right turn bay that's going from westbound to northbound is, it, it could not accommodate all the traffic that's heading northbound. And, again, the spill over is backing up into the through lanes, and the way to address this is to increase, increase the storage of the right turn bay, and, and this project is trying to do exactly that.
Um, so this is going to help with throughput, in, in, increase capacity?
Increase capacity by reducing the, the conflict, again, the, the spill over.
And would you say this part of Shea is under capacity currently?
It's operate, uh, I, I don't have the, uh, numbers now in front of me, but it's operating at a decent level of service.
Okay, I'll wrap, thank you so much, I'll wrap it up. Uh, my last question is, just adding a lane to the 101, does that, does that, why do we add a lane to the one, you know, we're adding a general purpose lane each way to the 101? Why do we do that?
Uh, during the way how MAG programs their projects are, they add lanes based on where the demand is.
Yeah.
Uh, so Loop 1, recently, ADOT finished their project to add a general purpose lane from I-17 to Princess, uh, Pima Boulevard. And similarly, about a couple of years ago, ADOT did the similar thing, uh, from Shea, south all the way to Loop 202. So this segment of the Loop 101 is, uh, where the capacity is needed now, so it's ma, making the roadway consistent.
Okay.
Uh, between Pima and Shea Boulevard.
So what, but that, that explains what we're doing, but why are we doing, and why are we adding a lane each way?
It's to, basically, to accommodate the additional traffic volume that's needed on the freeways.
So it increases capacity?
Increases the capacity, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you for taking my questions.
Sure. Just a couple other, um, comments. You may recall, last year, uh, at the Transportation Commission, I, I actually attended most of that meeting, and I heard the ADOT presentations. So the engineers, and that's their expertise that we rely on, made those detailed, and, you know, I really invite you to do the same thing at, at a commission meeting, because that was a unique one, when we had so many experts in here. The three levels were, and that were discussed in detail, were land acquisition. The land acquisition, they had marked them as slivers or whatever, and that meant they had to track down, get appraisals and so forth, to be prepared to answer those questions, to make, they also showed the radius that were involved, and, um, I noted several improvements at every intersection. For instance, Pima, there's a bottleneck, if you, you realize, uh, coming off the 101, and by the time we look at this improvement, people, uh, living in Scottsdale will notice that the engineers are right, and they, you know, these, this is part of a progressive kind of engineering design. The other thing that I'd point out is that, so we're going to, we're going to see some relief there at Pima Road and the 101, heading, heading north. Um, the other thing I'll point out, at one point, a couple years ago, the, um, ADOT was recommending removal of the wall which had the artwork. And that was for more spacing and so forth. We worked with them, and actually were able to preserve that. Now, they still are 22 years old, so they needed some, some, um, you know, TLC that we've allocated money for. So had they removed that sound wall, and had we not, well, they were very cooperative in working out a solution, and that's something we don't normally see in public and discuss how that happened. But we, uh, a replacement sound wall would have been on the, uh, at, at our cost, 100% at our cost, if, if that wall were removed. So we, the, the sound wall was preserved in cooperation with the ADOT experts, and, um, then the, uh, we're, we're taking care of the artwork on our ticket. So all of these combined, I see this as a very positive, um, uh, thing for our city, and it incre, it will increase commerce and, uh, make things, um, more valuable, both from a property tax standpoint, and actually a very, uh, improved, um, public trans, uh, excuse me, um, community transit, uh, picture. Next, we have Councilwoman Caputi, then Vice Mayor Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. Just super quick, I was taking notes while you guys were talking, and I wrote down adding lanes, widening lanes, increasing storage, increasing capacity. So I just wanted to point out, we had a comment from the public talking about somebody trying to stuff, uh, diets on these roads, and actually, all the words I'm hearing is that we're making roads wider and, and bigger, and, uh, having more storage and more capacity, so, right on. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor, uh, Littlefield.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I really don't have any questions on this particular item, I'm fine with it, but thank you so much. Uh, I did have questions regarding item number 12, very quick, and a couple of questions on item number six, which I missed when we went through. If I could ask, probably just, um, with Mr. Thompson, you probably have the answers to item number 12 for me. Um, this is to go on to private property, um, for invasive plant removal. Um, do these approvals that you're looking for, do they have end dates from the, for the property owner? Because this is going on to private property. Invasive plant mitigation temporary right of entry agreements.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilwoman Littlefield, no.
They do not have?
No, do they do not.
Do you require signature from the homeowner? Or the landowner?
Give me one second here.
Sure.
Probably, Sherry's looking it up.
So, uh, Councilwoman Littlefield, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Littlefield.
Whatever.
The, the agreement is to be completed in the form that's attached to your council report, and the date will be filled in.
Mm-hmm.
So that date could be, you know, I'm not sure all the different reasons why we might enter into this type of agreement, but that date will be filled in at a later time before it is, it is signed.
Okay, but it is signed, it is.
It will.
I guess what my, what my main concern is, is notification given to the homeowner that we are looking for this right of entry onto their private property for the, for the mitigation of this invasive plant. I don't have a, a problem with.
Yes.
Getting rid of the plant.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that we are notifying the homeowner, and that they have, uh, the right to be notified that somebody's going to walk along their property.
Absolutely. The agreement is with the HOA or the property owner, so if it's an HOA property, common areas, it would be with the HOA, and if it's with the property owner, it would be the property owner that would sign this agreement.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you so much. Um, the other question I had, I'm sorry I missed this when we were up higher on the consent agenda, on item number six, which is Miller Road in Pinnacle Peak, regarding the fences, when I was reading through this issue, it looked like the fence, uh, height that we had been working on diligently, uh, before, has been reduced again. Is that correct? Sorry.
I had the same question. Vice Mayor.
Um, Mayor, Councilwoman Janik, uh, your question is, I think regarding the flood walls? Was that it? Increasing the height of the flood walls?
The sound walls that were being, that we had negotiated with the residents up on Pinnacle Peak, um, in Miller, about the, um, sound of the new freeway and the cars coming through, and how it will affect their, their homes with noise. And we had negotiated before, I thought, for a higher fence level in order to try to trap the sound away from the homes. And now, when I was reading this, it looked to me like the fence level had gotten, dropped down again, so, and I received a number of letters and comments from our residents, so I just wanted to find out what is, what's happening with the fence between the, the new road and the, and the subdivisions.
Yes, um, Councilwoman Littlefield, so the, there are two separate walls that I think that some of the residents had been questioning. One is the existing HOA walls and the flood walls, those are some low walls that are in the wash. There was a request at one point to raise, um, one of those walls to hopefully help mitigate sound, however, in order to, um, do anything, those walls, we would have to raise them like nine or 10 feet in the air, which is not feasible. What we are doing is, on the bridge itself, there's, um, a sidewalk, and next to the sidewalk, we are putting in a concrete barrier that's 54 inches tall, and that's right next to the travel lane, and that should help mitigate some of the noise.
Okay, so almost six feet, okay. Five feet, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, did you have a question, uh, Councilwoman Graham?
Mayor, I had a question about a different consent item.
Okay, so are we concluded with the six, item number six? Um, and any, any other question? Okay, go ahead, which other one did you have a question about?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask very quickly about item number 19.
Okay, and mention the title and what it's about, please.
Absolutely, so, pull the different page here. I want to invite, uh, City Attorney Louise Santella. I'm probably mispronouncing your last name, sorry. I hope you accept that apology. Um, this is, um, this is about, uh, well, I'll, can, I know you're an attorney, but can you, in plain English, this is about short-term rentals and people complaining about them, and this is a way for us to kind of streamline addressing some of the short-term rental complaints, uh, that we get in the city. So if you just, in plainest of, uh, plainest of terms, tell us what's going on.
Mayor and members of the City Council, uh, thank you for this opportunity to address item number 19. What this item does, it improves our ability to enforce Chapter 18, which is, covers short-term vacation rentals, a, as well as public nuisances and some property maintenance type violations. Uh, right now, the, um, chapter requires us to, uh, attempt personal service in every case, that means in-person service. Um, that's more restrictive than the rules of, um, civil traffic, boating, and other types of, um, rules of procedure require. So there are facts and circumstances, as a general rule, uh, personal service is preferred, but there are times when it's not practical. For example, the short-term vacation rental owner lives out of state, so it's really not practical necessarily to serve them with a civil complaint i- in person. So this allows us to, based on the facts and circumstances, to use alternative means of service, such as certified mail, um, or other means authorized by the rules of civil procedure or, or, or the court. So it will allow us to be more efficient and use less resources in the service of civil complaints for the enforcement of short-term vacation rental violations, such as licensing violations or, um, nuisance party violations, et cetera. Uh, does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yeah, we, we get, um, a lot of complaints about not doing enough about short-term rental bad actors, and we know that short-term rentals in some neighborhoods run amok, and so this is just one more step. This council is vigorously, uh, enforcing all the rules we can, so I appreciate the explanation there, and this should help us, give us another tool, so I'm excited to vote for this. Thank you, Louise.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, thank you. With that, I move for approval of the consent agenda items one through 19.
So moved.
Second.
I moved, you second? Okay, very good. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, uh, please record your vote. Unanimous, thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our regular agenda items, they are number 20 through 25. Item number 20 is the Scottsdale City Hall Historic Preservation, that is Case 3, ZN 2023, and Case 21, HP 2023, and our presenter is Adam Yarun, the Planning and Development Area Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega. Members of council, my name is Adam Yarun. I'll be presenting, uh, tonight's cases concerning the preservation, historic preservation of Scottsdale City Hall, Cases 3, ZN 2023, and 21, HP 2023. Tonight, we'll be asking council to consider adopting an ordinance approving a zoning district map amendment, uh, changing, uh, the zoning for, for Scottsdale City Hall from downtown, downtown civic center type 2, plan block development, downtown overlay, uh, to downtown, downtown civic center type 2, plan block development with downtown overlay, historic property district, uh, as well as to determine the historic significance of.
Historic Property District, as well as to determine the historic significance of City Hall as a Scottsdale landmark and develop a historical significance report, as well as to establish a preservation plan and guidelines for .65 acres of the overall site that we're on today. Additionally, we'll be asking for council to consider adopting Resolution 12821 to declare that the historic resource findings and certain sections of our zoning ordinance are required to have the designation for Scottsdale landmark have been met and to declare that the historic designation report and historic preservation plan for Scottsdale City Hall be a public record. To provide some context, we're all aware where we're at today, but for those who might be watching at home, Scottsdale City Hall resides south of the southeast corner of East Indian School Road and North Drinkwater Boulevard. Here's a more central location depicting Scottsdale City Hall at the northeast quadrant of our Civic Center area. Part of our considerations this evening is to amend the zoning district map showing the subject site as DCC-2PBDDO to apply the historic property overlay to the subject site, again, for .65 acres of the overall site. To provide some background on this item, City Council requested initiation of the Historic Preservation Amendment for Scottsdale City Hall in December of 2021. The Historic Preservation Commission identified City Hall as historically significant on their 2022 and 23 work program. So consequently, in November of '22, staff contracted with Logan Simpson Design, to whom we have two of their consultants, Mariah Justice and John Sutherland here this evening to answer any questions you might have, to prepare Scottsdale Historic Property Register nomination and historic preservation plan. Notably, there are no changes proposed to City Hall with this request. The purpose is to simply promote and celebrate public awareness of City Hall as a focal point in Scottsdale's heritage, designate City Hall as a significant local resource, and assist in protecting, preserving, and enhancing City Hall into the future. The findings within the Logan Simpson Design Report identify that Scottsdale City Hall is over 50 years of age, which is a principal foundation to the designation for such a site with the HP overlay built in 1968. It meets the criteria established by the city zoning ordinance to define it as a historic landmark, something we'll be covering in a couple slides, and that as a public government building that is centrally located, City Hall has become a defining feature for the community of Scottsdale, as we can tell by all the attendance we have this evening. Additionally, it's historically significant building that is representative example of the overall aesthetic and character of the city, encapsulating the blend of modern design concepts with southwest regional architectural elements that are indicative of the development for Scottsdale during the second half of the 20th century. And finally, but most importantly, it's a prime example by work of master architect Benny Gonzalez. Again, I'll cover this in brief. The city zoning ordinance has two different categories for historic properties. One is that they're historic resource. The other is that they're historic landmark. In order to be historic landmark, you have to be historic resource first, and in order to do so, you have to qualify under specific criteria. Those criteria that qualify this site as such are items three and five in that they embody the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction that represents the work of a master that possesses high artistic values or represents a significant and distinguishable whole whose components may lack individual distinction. Additionally, that in addition to having retained the integrity of location, design, setting, materials, and workmanship, feeling, association, it possesses the physical features necessary to convey the significance and are significant with the historic context to Scottsdale as a city within the chronological periods that have been known associated to occupation and settlement of Scottsdale by people of all involved cultures. So knowing that it's first a historic resource, secondly, it's that it qualifies certain criteria as a landmark. Those criteria that qualify the site as a landmark include that it contains outstanding or extraordinary examples of architectural style. It represents the work of a master, again, master architect Benny Gonzalez. It's unique of visual quality and identification and is of general historic or cultural recognition by the community. Within that Logan Simpson Design Report that was included in your agenda packet, it remarks on exterior-defining features to which is part of the preservation plan that include, and I'll just read through a couple of them, design features that relate to the building of the pueblo revival style, most notably the irregular shape of the massing of the building, the asymmetrical shape, tapered walls, tapered columns, the flat roof, the rough stucco cladding that exists both outside as well as inside, and that it also contains mid-century modern architectural style principles with floor-to-ceiling windows, blending of interior and exterior spaces. It has distinctive fenestration on the pattern of each elevation, each are unique until their own. It provides an emphasis of horizontally and vertically through tapered columns and varied roof lines. It also provides an organization of circulation networks with primary public entrance on the west elevation and staff entrances on the northeast and southeast elevations. The artistic principles incorporated in the overall design include the Navajo white paint color, the obtuse angles, and the multibay elevations. So part of what this preservation plan has for recommendations for the exterior of the building include that we should avoid, in the future, avoiding, I'm sorry, avoid detracting from negatively impacting the current character-defining features, again, maintaining a balance between the negative space and positive space, providing, or preserving, rather, alterations that adversely impact the overall pueblo revival would be avoided, and that the porch on the south elevation, which was part of the original Benny Gonzalez design, be preserved. Additionally, the circulation networks be maintained with a primary public entrance on the west, and due to the significance of the paint color, as well as the rough stucco cladding, the color is recommended to be preserved, and any alteration should be compatible with the original building in terms of scale, massing, and materials. To briefly touch on the interior-defining features, again, which were noted within the Logan Simpson Design Report, includes the recessed floor within the atrium, the office organized around the perimeter of the recessed floor, the enclosed dais, pathways organized around the perimeter of the recessed floor, ramps organized on the perimeter, as well as consistency with the exterior design providing the rough stucco cladding emphasis on the horizontal and vertical lines within the building, the tapered columns that exist predominantly on the elevation behind council, the artistic features of the stained glass skylights that sit above the main kiva area, the balance of the solid and void positive and negative spaces, as well as the asymmetry and obtuse angles. So part of the preservation recommendations include, again, avoiding detracting from those character-defining elements, maintaining that balance between positive and negative space, and that the atrium be preserved with subdivided office spaces organized around the perimeter of the recessed floor and not within it, and that the circulation network around the atrium and material features that create the visual continuity between the inside and outside be retained. In terms of public outreach related to this initiative, could I ask for next slide, please? The project schedule and public outreach is included. We've had, we've gone before the Historic Preservation Commission in early May with a four to zero approval, a unanimous approval by Planning Commission in late May. And again, we're asking for council's consideration this evening in the adoption of the ordinance and resolution to which we covered at the start of this presentation. Based on the recommended approach, once the adopted, and once adopted by City Council, the historic preservation plan and guidelines will be brought back before the Historic Preservation Commission for approval. Again, I'll leave. Next slide, please. This slide on screen for council to consider, and again, the consideration of the recommended approach this evening for these two items, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call on Councilwoman Whitehead, then myself, and then Councilmember Graham.
So I just, I really want to thank the mayor. This is one of his first initiatives, and it was something that the City Council enthusiastically supported. And I also want to call out Mr., the architect Benny Gonzalez's son is here in the audience, Barney Gonzalez, who's also a planning commissioner. So, with that, I am enthusiastically making a motion to adopt ordinance number 4597 and ordinance number 12821 for Scottsdale City Hall Historic Preservation 3ZN 2023 and 21HP 2023.
Second. Now, I'll speak to my second. You know, this building has withstood the test of time, and it has, it's both a landmark as well as a, well, it gives identity to Scottsdale. You think about the space, how it's set. Benny Gonzalez was also a landscape architect, so he elevated the building in a platform way so that it would be prominent. And as Scottsdale was, you know, emerging, we talked about the annexation wars and how Scottsdale could have been absorbed, almost boxed in by Phoenix. And this building became really a heroic symbol for our city. Also, I will mention that in October, which is actually 55 years since it was dedicated, the City of Scottsdale will be holding numerous events related to this building, as well as to the Civic Center Park and all the venues that we have outside to go with it. So thank you, and the consultants, I feel, did an excellent job, and I really appreciate the time I spent with them. I did show them some secret passages in this building. So we'll get to that a little later in the fall. Councilmember Graham, and then Councilmember Durham.
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, good presentation. Yeah, this is a unique building. They wouldn't make a building like this, they wouldn't design a building like this in the modern day, would they?
I think every architect takes their own liberties with every project, but certainly this one is unique.
So this vote seems so obvious, we should do it. Can you think of any drawbacks to the designation?
Thank you, Councilmember Graham, members of the commission. With respect to this item and its consideration, again, this was a City Council-initiated item. Commonly, there's discussions within the community regarding the application of the historic preservation overlay and how it would affect or may not affect a property. Certainly, it adds an additional layer of protection for properties that maintain unique character and provides guidance as to how those properties should be considered. We did evaluate as a city organization with Danworth and his staff, as well as facility staff, to ensure that the guidelines provided enough flexibility for the city to manage its operation and still be contemporary and providing, hopefully, a new screen at some point that'll work, and along with some other items, but still maintaining unique character along the way. So-
Well, we, for instance, we just redid the whole Civic Center. Would that have been more difficult with this designation? Would that have affected it at all?
Thank you, Councilmember Graham, members of the commission. The application of this HP overlay is, again, going to be specific to this building-
Okay.
-including the southeast patio.
Yeah.
So this would not have touched anything regarding the areas outside of that boundary.
Well, I'm excited about it. I'm enthused to vote yes. I wish we promoted a little more the beautiful, you know, stained glass ceiling, and I wish we rang the Solari bell a little more often in the corner there, but other than that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Durham.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you may have already answered this question from Councilmember Graham's question, but what are the limitations that this places on us in terms of renovating, upgrading, whatever we might need to do to the building? Would it be okay, as long as we follow some of those characteristics that you listed on the slides?
Thank you, Councilmember Graham, members of the commission. That's exactly correct. So as changes may be necessary in the future, again, there are none proposed with this proposal.
Right.
But should they be needed in the future, we would confer with the preservation plan first, take, ensure that any proposal would be issued a certificate of appropriateness to maintain the preservation plan and guidelines, and if not, go before the Historic Preservation Commission to consider those items, so we have an additional level of oversight. And of course, if it's at some point needed, council can certainly interject in that process through an appeal process, with the city being the applicant in council to consider any amendments to this preservation plan against an opposing recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're going to take a vote. I have to mention, when this building was designed in 1967, it was very innovative. The walls are four and a half feet thick. There's a cavity between those walls, and that's where ducts are run. So think about that, that the ducting for this, for this building was handled through a central plant, and as you look at the columns along here, you'll see some vents, because those ducts, not only did they go through the wall, they were brought up into the columns and integrated very fully with the design. These are things you don't necessarily notice. Also, return air was handled that way. So the award-winning stained glass has held up. It's one inch thick, so it really does give the space, make the space dazzling. The other thing I'll point out is that another building, that is, the library, was built at the same time. It's actually larger than this building, and it also had a kiva space, a book area, you might remember as you came in the entrance. However, when the city, when the city needed more library space, they chose to build and add on to the building that had a great deal of character, and that really broke the possibility of it being a historic property library. There's different things architects could do, maybe, you know, give it 10 feet before you make the addition and so forth. They didn't. They just slammed it right against it. So that's a situation where you can kind of see next door how one, this building maintained its integrity, the other building, and by the way, they used to have planning and engineering. Everything was in this building. So that moved to the 7447, you know, one building, one-stop shop across the street. So that's, that's how you can grow. You don't necessarily grow all within the same building, and there's really no impediments for keeping this building intact. Councilwoman Kapooti, and then we'll vote. Thank you.
Just really fast, and I wasn't going to ask, but then we were chatting and laughing back here, and maybe it isn't that dumb of a question. We just renovated our bathrooms, for instance, in this building and brought them up to being very modern. As the building, of course, ages, I'm no expert in historic preservation construction, but is there any kind of a friction between modernizing things that need to be modernized and still sort of keeping the feel of the historicness of the building? Again, the bathroom renovation is the perfect example, because we certainly didn't use the, you know, decades-old bathroom fixtures. Those are looking really good, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kapooti and members of council for the question. Again, so long as the character-defining elements that were listed for the interior of the building, which none of which really focus on the bathrooms, it would be fine. I mean, to the extent possible, it would be, provided a bathroom, as an example, doesn't disrupt a primary pillar within the, within the city hall space, it wouldn't be an issue. So it doesn't really remark on fixtures of any kind. It certainly defers to trying to find similar liking-kind lighting fixtures and things of that nature, but again, there's enough flexibility within the preservation plan that, again, we found it to be suitable for the operation of the building in the long run.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, please record your vote.
Mayor, I apologize. Was there a motion?
Yes, the motion was made, and I seconded it, and then by Councilwoman Solange Whitehead, myself. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Very, very pleased with that. Next, we'll move on to item number 21, the truth and taxation. We will be holding a truth and taxation hearing and a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year FY 2023/24 property tax levy. First, we'll have a presentation, and there are several speakers, so we will go probably from the presentation to the speakers and then come in with our comments. But I think if we, excuse me, if we handle it in segments, you may call on us if there's any que-
if we, excuse me, if we handle it in segments, you may call on us if there's any question as you're making your presentation, Ms. Sanders, that, that might be the most efficient way, and then we can get through the presentation and go to public comment. Listed as item number twenty-one, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. This is the truth and taxation and public hearing for our proposed property tax for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Next slide. I wanted to start out by giving you an overview of property taxes and where they go and who assesses property taxes. So this chart shows you that school districts assess property taxes, the county assess property taxes, and the city assesses property taxes. So for every dollar that residents pay in property taxes, eighty-five percent goes to schools and educations and county and county special districts, and about fifteen percent comes to the city. And how does that translate to actual property taxes paid? So next slide. I know this is, oops. Let's see if we can get that back up. So what this slide shows is actual, actual property taxes paid for a property that has a median limited property value. Now, median limited property value is different from market value. Full cash value or market value may be for this property five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand, but the limited property value is what is used by the county assessor to calculate taxes. So per the county assessor, the median limited property value for a Scottsdale home is about three hundred, and as you can see, two years ago, three hundred and forty thousand, and today, the role that is highlighted in orange, the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four year, our median property value for Scottsdale for tax purposes is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six seventy-nine. Now, how the fifteen percent of the chart I showed you earlier, the fifteen percent of taxes that go to the city, how that translates to actual dollars is our proposed levy for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, I'm looking at the highlighted, I'm sorry, sorry for the flashing. I'm looking at the highlighted orange line, and the proposed tax rate is ninety-eight point one-fourth cents, and that translates to a primary property tax of a hundred and ninety-five dollars and two cents, and a secondary, a secondary property tax of a hundred and six dollars and sixty-two cents for this property. And again, median property means in the middle, so there's going to be fifty percent of our properties that will be above this median, and fifty percent of our properties will be below the median. I wanted to bring the last two years to show you the change. Two years ago, in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, our property tax rate was actually higher, however, the limited property assessed value was lower, so the tax is lower. And part of the increase is because of the increase in the limited property value and not just because of the tax rate. So as you can see, this property, it's the same property, the assessed value went from three hundred and forty thousand in fiscal year twenty-two to three hundred and seventy thousand, seventy-eight thousand today. And so with the proposed rate for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the increase for our primary property tax is about seventeen dollars and thirty-two cents, and for the secondary property tax is about twenty-nine ninety-nine. Now, total taxes that this property pays may be two thousand five hundred dollars, and again, you know, two thousand two hundred of that goes to schools and county, and about three hundred and seventy comes to the city, broken into the two components that we charge. So, next slide. So again, our property tax, there's two components to our property tax. We have a primary component and a secondary component. The primary component is our operating levy, most of that goes to the general fund, and some of that goes to our tort claims, which I'll explain a little bit more later. And that proposed rate is fifty-one point five cents, which translates to a thirty-nine point three million levy for the city. The secondary property tax rate is the levy that we assess for paying down our debt service on voter-approved general obligation bonds. So these are bonds that our voters approved for us to assess this levy to repay, and that rate is forty-six point six four cents, which generates thirty-five point six million in levy for us, so a combined rate of ninety-eight point one-four and seventy-four point nine million. Next slide. So the truth and taxation hearing is required by state statute if the proposed primary property tax levy, not including new construction, exceeds the prior year's primary property tax levy, and a roll-call vote is required to levy this increase in property taxes. Next slide. So our primary property tax, as I showed you in the previous slide, what is proposed at fifty-one point five oh cents for thirty-nine point three million levy. Current year, our primary property tax levy is point four nine seven cents, and our levy generated from that is thirty-six point four million. So the increase is point zero one eight cents, and the increase in our levy is two point nine million. And because of this increase in the levy, that is why we are required to have a truth and taxation hearing, a public hearing, and also a roll-call vote. Next slide. And so digging further, looking further into our primary property tax levy, that is broken up into what we assess for our general fund, which supports our general fund operations, which is primarily police and buyer, and the other portion of our primary property tax is the risk management fund, where we reimburse the city for the tort judgments. And so the general fund portion of our primary property tax is forty-eight point six two cents, and the risk management portion of our levy is point zero two eight eight cents. And the point, sorry, the general fund levy of point four eight six two is the maximum rate that is allowed under Arizona Constitution, and the tort levy is allowed under the Arizona Administrative Code. And with that, I can answer any questions, and next slide. This is the action that we request from council, is to solicit public testimony and also by roll-call vote approve a motion to levy the proposed taxes.
Thank you. At this point, we will proceed with the public hearing. Accordingly, I have several people who've signed up with a clerk to speak, beginning with Mark Lewis, then Yvonne Cahill, and Stefani Sanderson. So Mark Lewis. Mark Lewis going once, going twice. All right. Then we will go on to Ms. Yvonne Cahill, and then Stefani Sanderson.
Yes, I'm a citizen and a resident, I've been a realtor for eighteen years. One of the things that people love about Arizona and Scottsdale is our low property taxes. We have people come through open houses, buying property from all other states, and they love the low tax rates. They, when you tell them what the tax rate is, they, they're like, is that for, like, six months? And I say, no, it's for a whole year, and they're just shocked that our tax rate is so low. What is really bothersome to me is that Arizona is the number-three state predicted to have the greatest property tax increase in five years or by twenty twenty-seven, with the average annual property taxes jumping from one thousand nine fifty-six to approximately four thousand seven eighty-five in five years. Senior citizens are not going to be able to afford their housing, they're not going to be able to live here, and we can see this increase coming, and in a city that says they're trying to provide affordable housing, this goes against everything you guys say that you're going to try to support. Also, the state has recently given back to taxpayers money, and it's because they're fiscally responsible. And my feeling is that the city of Scottsdale is not living within their means, they just have, think they have a blank check to spend your money on whatever they want, no matter how crazy the project might be. And I think it's time that we bring back some type of a citizen initiative, that we have citizens sit on the budget committee and have a panel where citizens actually can give input. Thank you for your time.
You know, Ms. Cahill, something hits me right here, maybe I have a question for you. Ms. Cahill? I have a question, because you're an expert. Could you also explain there is a special provision for seniors who own their home and, and where they may have a, a tax reduction in Arizona? Could you explain that?
Yeah, there is a way for seniors to apply for that, but many, it's not a very well-known...
Could you explain it a little bit, because many, as you said, many seniors don't know how to do that? What's the age requirement?
Sixty-five.
And how can that be applied for? If, if you know, if you know.
Yeah, sixty-five.
They can apply, and is it substantial?
It has to be their primary residence.
Certainly, and would it be totally waived or partially waived? Can you help?
I'd have to look into that.
I, I believe it's pretty substantial, so, but we'll, we'll follow up on that from the senior aspect, because it is a provision that, that is allowed in, in Arizona. Thank you so much. Next, we'll go on to Stefani Sanderson, Linda Scorso. Now, we have Stefani Sanderson, and then Ms. Scorso did not wish to speak previously, but is she on the list for this one? Oh, excuse me, please, please do come forward, Ms. Linda Scorso. I don't see anyone yet, so we'll move to Paul Rowe. So these names were registered with our clerk, and, and we're reaching out now, so no show there. Stefani Sanderson, Linda Scor, excuse me, Paul Rowe? Okay, thank you, sir. I know you were impressed by the building when, when we talked before the meeting started, so happy to have you in, in this historic landmark now.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name's Paul Rowe, I reside in Villa Monterey, address is registered with the application to speak. As a longtime Scottsdale homeowner and taxpayer, I find the recommendation for an increase in the local property tax rate both unnecessary and ill-advised. With home values having increased significantly in the past few years, property tax revenues to the city will rise naturally due to higher valuations, producing more revenue. In addition, with stubbornly high inflation and interest rates negatively impacting retirees' investment accounts, raising rates on people's primary residences would be particularly inappropriate at this time, something mentioned by the previous speaker. Residents are already unduly burdened with tax burdens at current levels. Also, Scottsdale already enjoys the highest bond rating awarded a city by the three major credit rating agencies. Therefore, I recommend that the council reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marcus Tork and Marissa Hamilton. Please state your name and address, if you would, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. Marcus Tork, six one one three East Monterey Way, Scottsdale. Just a quick comment, particularly with inflation, got a wife and kids, we're getting hit, hit pretty hard, we have to make discretionary, discretionary spending decisions, we have to cut things back and watch our spending, so I would, I would recommend we do that as a city, too. That's my comments, but I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, sir. And Marissa Hamilton, and then I have Mike Peterson. Excuse me, Marissa Hamilton, and, oh, excuse me, Patricia Pellet.
Hi, my name is Marissa Hamilton. I'm speaking to you today about the property tax increases, because we are suffering in Arizona on some of the highest inflation in the nation, and this is something that, even though many Scottsdale residents are, are in a better financial position than much of the rest of the state, it is pressing on families here. There is only so much that families can take, and I just wanted to read something to you that I thought was important. It said that because property valuations increase, the city of Scottsdale can decrease its primary, primary property tax rate from point five zero three nine per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation down to point four nine seven zero in the fiscal year and still achieve the proposed levy amount. And so I would encourage you to maybe take a different approach and look at the math that you're facing. I, I think that the citizens should have concerns as to how you are planning to spend this money, and maybe take a closer look at each of the line items. I used to work at the city of Phoenix, and we found that oftentimes, the programs that they stated that they were funding ended up having a lot of pork in them that the city council didn't plan for. And so doing a line-by-line item, a, a review of the budget would probably help you, so you can reduce your taxes and help your citizens handle this period of time with high inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Patricia Pellet.
Hello, my name is Patricia, I live at twelve six ten East Laurel Lane in Scottsdale. We have the highest inflation in, for decades, and as Marissa said, Scottsdale has had higher-than-average inflation in the nation. Scottsdale also has some of the highest gas prices in the U.S. Often lately, I've struggled to even get enough gas to drive my kids to school or even to work, working downtown Phoenix. Workers' pay adjustments are not keeping up with inflation. The S U S D superintendent Menzel and his supporters have blamed, actually, the declining student enrollment over the last few years on the housing prices. The housing prices are pushing out families who cannot afford to live in Scottsdale. Last year, some of you invited a developer here who justified his project at the hospital as a means to provide housing to the nurses who cannot afford to live here in Scottsdale. If you believe both of these are true, then surely you'll vote no on raising housing costs with these taxes. Families and those on fixed incomes do not need more costs right now. If the schools do need more funds, I've attended every single school board meeting in the last year, they also have a lot of pork they can cut, including the training in the curriculum aimed at sexualizing our kids and have a political agenda, do not raise the taxes on us. Thank you.
Okay, it's, I believe that concludes public testimony, therefore, the public hearing has concluded, and next, we will have any discussion, and at this point, but again, I've closed public, the public hearing. Do I have any questions from council before I request a motion? Just to keep things moving, as you know, we, we have discussed a, and presented a detailed budget. Scottsdale is, as a municipality, has an outstanding record, fifty years of financial excellence. We have maintained that to provide all of the municipal services that I know people people of Villa Monterey, and I've lived in Scottsdale for 44 years. So I feel especially proud also of our parks, of our public safety, and all the municipal buildings and services that Scottsdale provides. I would say we are very demanding and we are held accountable. That means that we ask and rely on public input to improve our city. There are some new initiatives in our budget. However, as I mentioned with one speaker, is when it comes to property taxes and for the senior population, I really wish that the Realtor Association would come forward and help the seniors understand that they could basically get a waiver on property taxes or a certain, a large percent of it. So whatever can be done, again, the seniors have earned their home and contributed to our successful Scottsdale way of life. Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, that was brought up a couple times. Sonya, if I can just ask you a question about that. So if someone's a senior citizen and they get that discount, does that reduced amount still go up? And you may not know the answer to that.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Graham, I would have to look into that. I do not have the answer for that, but I will bring that back. I'll provide that for you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Sonya. And it was, overall, it was a good presentation. I appreciated it. I think that this is probably not the time to be raising, hiking residents' taxes. We know the two local categories, the primary and the secondary property tax. Primarys for general operations, secondary for debt service. But both those here are going up, and I would prefer more just to keep them flat. Seven point, seven and a half, eight percent increase on local property tax isn't nothing, especially if you think about that every year after year after year. And so, you know, the packet explains the increase in detail. It explains how we're following the rules and we're complying with everything, but it doesn't expressly say why we need the money. And to get that, you really want to go look at the budget. And we know the budget. We've looked at the budget. It's, you know, we're increasing our headcount for the city. We're covering overruns. We are dealing with, yes, we are paying for some inflation. And we're bringing in funds for some controversial projects. I think residents deserve to know why the city wants the extra money. And I think for people struggling with higher cost of living, especially in Arizona and Scottsdale, parents trying to cover, we know the whole thing, gas prices, trying to cover higher tuition costs, higher interest rates, people on fixed incomes that aren't going up with the decreased, devalued dollar, that a higher property tax hurts. And so, you know, and also, we can't forget that we're going to ask to raise your sales tax in 2024. So keep that in mind. So we've raised user fees last month. We hiked a lot of those. We're going to raise your water and utility fees. We're looking at that tonight. And for people that watch their own finances and then you sit here and you watch us closely, I think you feel a little bit of a disconnect. And, you know, we know that the fiscal '24 budget we're all looking at, that's the reason why. We know that we get $6 million more in interest earnings. That's, covers a lot. $13 million more in anticipated sales tax. Our sales tax collections are going up. $21 million this year in increased state revenue share. I know that's, a lot of that's one time. But it's, you know, people look at their local government and we're not building the 58 critical projects from the 2019 bonds. About a third of those, we're just not going to build, but we're still going to raise your taxes. So I think people feel a little bit of a disconnect there. So we've, you know, we've been promised for years that, we've been growing our population a lot, a lot, right? Increasing housing and growing our population. We were told that that would broaden the tax base and just, you know, fill the coffers. We'd have plenty of money. It pays for itself. But here we are, asking for more money. It doesn't seem to be working out that way. So I just say with every residential unit that we add, that's a bigger tax base. And we increase taxes eight percent more, that's a lot more money. So instead of raising your property taxes to just below the legal limit like this is proposing, I think we should maybe try not to spend every last dollar we have as we face some economic uncertainty in the future. And so with those considerations, I will oppose increasing the residential property taxes by the eight percent. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilwoman Janik, Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for Ms. Andrews. The median LPV is up. If we keep the tax rate from last year the same, what will happen to our collections?
Mayor, Councilmember Janik, can you give me a moment for that?
Sure.
Mayor, Councilmember Janik, members of the council, I think I need to answer that question in two parts. For the secondary property tax, we cannot reduce that to the same as last year because we are required to use that tax to pay debt service. And the law only allows us to assess a secondary property tax that is equal to the principal and interest payment plus a reasonable factor for delinquency. So if you can bring up the slide, let's see. If you could go back to... If you, yes, this is the slide. So if you can see, the larger increase in our property tax is the secondary property tax. That one, based on this example of a median limited property value home, the secondary property tax, which is the far right column, that is going up by the larger percent, the 2999. The primary property tax is going up by only 1732. So if we go, if you go to the next slide, this is the primary property tax. Instead of assessing 5150, if we only assess, I'm sorry, the next slide, please. Next slide. So this is the primary property tax. If we only assess the 4970, which is what is currently assessed, instead of the 5150, you go back to, I'm sorry, I have to jump around because we didn't prepare for this question. So if you go back to the previous slide, yes, this slide. So if you have a limited property value of 378,679, 378,679 times .497. A property would be paying 18820 instead of 19502. So the increase would be $10.50 instead of $17.32. And the reason is because the limited property value has increased from 357,544 to 378,679. So again, you know, just to kind of summarize what I just explained, the property tax rate is broken out between the primary property tax and the secondary property tax. We are not able to reduce the secondary property tax or revert to last year's, or current year rates because it is tied to the debt service, which the voters approved for us to assess. We also made a commitment to voters that the secondary property tax, when we had the bond 2019 program vote, that that would not exceed, I think, 57 cents. And right now, secondary property tax is at 46.64 cents. So it is well below the commitment we made to the voters. And so the only property tax rate that we could look at if we were to keep it the same as this year would be the primary property tax. The primary property tax proposed for this year is 5150. And if we were to make it 4970, it would change this increase from 1732 cents for this median house to $10.50.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Councilwoman Whitehead and Vice Mayor Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. So basically, seven bucks a year savings by voting no. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, so what do you get for seven bucks a year? Let's talk about that. In the past, the city council in the 2010s, they decided they were going to vote no, vote down this property tax. And what happened is they couldn't, we have always been second in pay for our police. And that went down. We became, I don't know, down, pretty far down on the list. The majority of our budget is on staff. The majority of our non-infrastructure budget, and I'm going to get to that, sir, is staff. And the majority of that is police. Big part of, almost 50% of our budget. So first of all, the city council could not meet the services that our citizens demand. And they ended up having to bump the property tax in one year to make up for three years of voting no. So it was a much bigger jump. It was much, it impacted the, it impacted the residents far more than had they just steadily approved the allotted amount. So the, and it wasn't until this past year, and it was one of my initiatives, that I finally was able, we were losing police, I was finally able to get our police pay back to second, second to Phoenix. So I think our police are worth seven bucks a year. I also want to talk about our city property taxes in relationship to the rest of the valley. We have some of the lowest property taxes in the valley. And yet, our city is like a third or a quarter as dense. So our police, our garbage trucks, our water distribution has to go three times as far as if you lived in Gilbert, or if you lived in Chandler, or if you lived in Mesa, which is a very dense, these are much higher density cities. So you have a lot more people around you, and yet you're paying more for property taxes for services that don't have to go nearly as far to get to you. So there are reasons that the city, there are very specific reasons that our costs have gone up. Our cost of employees, our need to stay competitive to keep our best employees, the cost of not having the best police officers, of not having the best code enforcement, of not having enough code enforcement, those are costs to you, and those are costs that will reduce your property values. So seven bucks a year, I think is worth a lot. I also want to talk about the debt service. We are AAA rated, so thank you for knowing that. Bonds are for infrastructure, and the property taxes pay for our police, just to give you. So we don't issue bonds to pay for our water, you know, staff. And so those are different buckets, if you will. And we also, debt service costs a significant amount of money as well, and so with interest. So we definitely like to minimize interest. I want to talk about the, I think Mr. Graham mentioned that the debt service is going up. That is not true. I was on the city council when we passed the bonds, or when you all passed the bonds, when we brought it to you. And we made a commitment to keep your taxes flat and yet make big investments in the city. And we've done just that. And as our treasurer just mentioned, it's below the commitment we made to you. So we've been real good with that. I also want to point out, there are no critical infrastructure projects that we're not doing. Absolutely not. And we never have, never have not done anything that has to do with public safety or is critical. So I will be supporting it, but I would like to have some information on the website perhaps about senior citizens. Because I agree, and I've been a Realtor in the past as well, and we do have very low taxes. But if there's a program for our senior citizens to not be impacted by tax hikes, I think that should be available on the city's website. And so I'm enthusiastic that the mayor brought that up. And I think that's all I have for now. So thank you so much.
Okay, Vice Mayor Littlefield, Councilwoman Janik, Councilmember Graham. Vice Mayor Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be supporting this tonight. I think that this is one simple way that this council can help with our citizens who need a little help right now in these very troubled and unusual times of high inflation and lower income and higher costs for just about everything. I think that if we're really interested in helping to keep our citizens in their homes and not on the streets, this is a very, very simple and very good way to do it for a year. It won't hurt us in any particular striking manner, and I don't think it will damage our budget. We'll be able to work around it if we have to. I think that inflation is going to be a continuing problem, both for individuals and for the city. And so that is a concern in cutting back on our income like this. But I think for, right now, with the concern that we have up here on this dais, which is so huge, about people being out of their homes, not being able to afford their water or their electricity or gas in their car to go to work, lose their jobs, there's so much right now upheaval. We don't need to add more to it. And so I think I will be voting against that this year. I don't guarantee next year. But I think that for right now, we need to see how this plays out and how our economy is going to go ahead in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Janik, Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. I need some clarification on Slide 3. When you look at the primary property tax for 2324, it's $195. Is that per $10,000 of assessed value? Is that the total amount for that house?
Mayor, Councilmember Janik, members of the council, that is the total amount for the house. So for this house, their property tax, their total property tax that they would pay would be about $2,500. Of the $2,500, $195.02 is the city's primary property tax, and $176.62 is the city's secondary property taxes. The remaining $2,200 goes to the school education and county.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Whitehead was a little displeased with maybe some of my comments, but I think that, you know, the residents, we're asking a lot from the residents. We're asking for user fee increases. We're asking for water and utility increases. We're going to ask to raise your sales taxes next year. And we've got another property tax right here. And so seven bucks or whatever it comes out to, you multiply that by the number of houses. It's a lot, it adds up. And so, yeah, maybe some years we do support it. But at this time, with inflation and an uncertain economy and the cost of living, you know, if it's just $7, then we won't miss it that much. But if it's $7, that's not going to make all the difference. So voting no is not going to cut police pay. So let's just start there. We've, you've seen with your own eyes some of the projects that we've paid for, that we shouldn't have pursued. You can't really defend every dollar that is paid by the city. So I think it's okay that we exercise a little discipline and say no to another tax increase. Our taxes are the lowest in the valley because that makes-- Our taxes are the lowest in the valley because that makes us a desirable place. That doesn't mean we have to go raise them. And we're a AAA bond-rated city largely because we've said no to a lot of these tax and spend and other types of policies. We've been disciplined. So I don't think we need to say yes to every increase and look at it case by case. And so I would argue we just keep the tax flat for the year. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you know, I will just hopefully make some closing comments here. It's incorrect to say that we're raising sales tax next year. The sales tax is only raised by the people, the vote of the people. So it's incorrect to say that we are raising sales tax. Excuse me, it is always by the vote of the people. The people have to see value, whether we need a road and all the demands that are needed for police fire, for structures and so forth. So that's, that sales tax are dependent on a voter's approval. Next year, or in, in, in 2025, the sales tax will go down because certain will have expirations of the, of those taxes. Now, whether a study group decides to renew an amount, the same or less of that sales tax related to the protect, secure, and preserve issue. Once you have something, you want to take care of it, right? So that's going to be a decision made by the people. We do not dictate the sales tax. It's voted on by the people, it's enumerated, and that's why we do not, we cannot dictate that. You know, looking at just the generalizations is the, that we have high expectations, and I really do understand the viewpoint of Councilmember Graham and Littlefield, that we are in a stress situation. I tried to point out about seniors as well. The other fact is that 85% of the property tax is not related to Scottsdale, right? So that property tax is going for junior colleges and education and so forth, and the county takes their share as well. So these are all services that interconnect cities. But if we can, and these are all interrelated to the budget questions that we will be reviewing and have been reviewing. That's a step by step. If, if someone were to say, you know, the, the cost of, of garbage pickup is no longer valid, well, the price of, of LPG gas and the price of gasoline, the price of insurance have all gone up, and we still expect to get those services. The same thing with our police vehicles. They have to be on the road, and if the market price is up, we, we want to make sure that we can serve the community. Those are, you know, inflationary costs that have to be met, especially by the vulnerable and, you know, by families as well. So with that, I see, is there one Councilwoman Whitehead? And then I believe.
Roll call after that. Thank you for letting me speak again, Mayor. Councilwoman Graham, I'm never displeased with you. We're up here to debate the issues. We debate them in public. We have no idea what each other thinks prior to these meetings, and that is exactly how a city government is supposed to work, how democracy is supposed to work. So the way taxes work is we all pitch in a little and we get a lot for it. And that's how the city has a preserve, multi-billion dollar preserve, a water treatment facility. We pitch in a little, we get a lot. It's, you know, and the, and the way to save money, and this is something I was elected to do four years ago, is to renegotiate all the contracts that didn't favor us, the residents. And we've done that. And the way to save, to protect our quality of life is to go ahead and use those taxes to make sure every dollar benefits our community as a whole. So we make sure that many of our services are free, like the Granite Reef Senior Center and our other senior centers. So there's a difference of opinion, but that's just the way it works when you have a free country. So with that, I'm still a yes, but thank you.
Okay. Accordingly, we would, by roll call, a vote, I would make the motion so that we can take a vote. By statute, we must take it as a roll call vote to accept the property tax levy as stated, advertised, and discussed today without, and as presented. So that would be a motion, and I'd hear a second so that we can vote on it and continue. We have a budget to discuss as well afterwards. We have something, if someone wants to take out a certain measure of parks and rec, or they want to take out a certain measure of, of patrols in your neighborhood, that can be discussed. But that's the other part of what we're doing tonight. So we have a motion, a second. I would ask for the clerk to ask for a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor David Ortega?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kathy Littlefield?
No.
Councilmembers Tammy Caputi?
Yes.
Tom Durham?
Yes.
Barry Graham?
No.
Betty Janik?
No.
And Solange Whitehead?
Yes.
Thank you. The item passes 4 to 3 with Vice Mayor Littlefield, Councilmember Graham, and Councilmember Janik voting no.
Thank you. At this point, we will go on to item number 22, which is the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 municipal streetlight improvement district expenses and property tax levy by district. I'll ask for a presentation of the public hearing on proposed fiscal year FY 2023-24 municipal streetlight improvement district expenses and property tax levy by district. We have Sonia Andrews, City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Next slide. So the streetlight improvement district program was established in 1971 to allow taxpayers that reside in a certain area that wants more than ordinary public lighting that, you know, that is provided for public benefit, to petition the city to form a streetlight district so that they can obtain the additional and enhanced lighting. We currently have 355 streetlight improvement districts formed by petition of the property owners. Next slide. So the sole purpose of these streetlight improvement districts is to purchase electricity for lighting public streets. And pretty much, the city acts as the middle, where we have the authority to assess the special streetlight tax, property tax, and we pay the electric company, whether it's APS or SRP, for the energy costs. So the levy is calculated based on an estimated energy cost for the year. Next slide. And for each district, there's differences in the number of lights, the usage, whether it's SRP or APS, so that determines what the costs are. And again, there's 355 separate districts representing 33,750 properties. Next slide. In February of 2023, we formed two new districts, the Palo Viento 1 and the Palo Viento 2. That's also included in, that will not be included till the fiscal year 2425 levy. Next slide. So in total, our proposed 2324 levy for a streetlight improvement districts is 494,979. So with this total levy and the 33,750 properties, that works out to about an average of $14.67 per property for the streetlight improvements. And that, that's all I have for my presentation. Next slide. The action that we are asking council is to solicit public testimony on the streetlight improvement proposed expense and tax levy, and also to approve the motion to levy the proposed taxes.
Thank you. I see a hand from Councilwoman Janik.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it appropriate for me to make a motion now?
Yes. Excuse me. I, I actually am opening up the public hearing for public comment. No one has signed up. There are none. Technically, I mean, I have to open and close public testimony on this as a hearing. So at this point, I will close the public hearing, and then I will call on Councilwoman Janik.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the annual statements and estimates of expenses and levy proposed fiscal year 2324 municipal streetlight improvement district taxes by district taxes to be assessed by ordinance on June 27, 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, please record your vote. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, we will move on a public hearing on and adoption of water rates and fees. Presenter is Brian Beesmeyer, Water Resources Executive Director. So we will first have the presentation, then I will have a public hearing, open and close. Proceed, Mr. Beesmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I have a brief presentation tonight on water rates and fees. And just as a reminder, your water and wastewater are enterprise funds, and so they are run through the revenues collected by the rates and fees, not by taxes, not through funds through the general fund. Additionally, we support, we run as a business, and we support the assistance of other departments, such as HR and legal, through payments to the general fund for those services. And I'm just going to go to next slide. I'm not going to try to touch these up here because they've been glitching all night. So as you recall, on March 7, we had a discussion on our, on our rates and fees in more detail than I'm going to present tonight. But I have those slides, and you have those slides in your packet as well. There's a 60-day state requirement for posting. We did that on April 4, which gets us to today with that 60-day period. And then tonight, as, as the mayor mentioned, it's a public hearing. Should council approve, we're looking for a sewer rate effective on July 13 and a water rate effective on November 1. And I've got, so when we did this and presented this information to you, well, next slide, I'm sorry. Let me go one more slide. So we're asking for a revenue increase of 4.2% on the water and 5.8% on the wastewater, the wastewater being a smaller fund. The overall percentage there, which is not on there, is actually 4.6% for an overall revenue increase of $7.5 million. When we did this in March, I didn't have all the information, but I, but I, but I thought it would be informative to look at what other Valley cities are doing. Now, we set our rates not by what other Valley cities do, but by our costs and our needs to provide services. However, I thought it would be informative, and so if we could switch to the Elmo, if that works. And then if you could zoom in a little bit. Great, thank you. So you can see, we're asking for 4.2 and 5.8. Phoenix is asking for 13% on both the water and the sewer. Chandler for 5 and 6. And then Gilbert, which had a double-digit rate increase on their water last year, is having a tremendous increase on the sewer. Then Peoria, 12% on the water. And this is just to show that the costs that we're encountering are typical throughout the valley. We try to run a very efficient operation and keep our costs down. And then we set our water rates also are done in a manner to provide for conservation. So we have tiered rates. So the more you use, the more you pay on a per-unit basis. But we want to be very conscious and considerate of the low water users and such in our, in our community, and those, those rates are structured so that, if you, there we go. So if a customer uses only 10,000 gallons of water, and in each, the different meter sizes, the 5 eighths being the smallest and the one predominantly found in South Scottsdale, then their rate increase per month from the water side would be a dollar. And at a one inch, it would be a dollar 40. And with that... Next slide, please. That really concludes my briefing, and staff's recommendation is for adoption of Resolution 12795 and Ordinance Number 4589, pending your questions.
Thank you. At this point, I will now open a public hearing. Purpose of the public hearing is to comply with statutes as to information that's disseminated to the public, an opportunity for them to step forward. If there's any question on the public hearing and adoption of water rates and fees, I see none, therefore I will close the public hearing portion of this item number 23. Finally, you know, part of what we're dealing with here, I just have a few comments. We're talking about water security. Water security is vital. Water security is why we test our, our fire hydrants. Water security is part of the automatic sprinkler systems that are required basically, basically since 1987. So the majority of the housing in Scottsdale has, and it's part built into our property insurance rates. This also applies to commercial water security as well. We have people, of course, businesses, restaurants, and many, many types of businesses. I've seen the rate schedules that are all listed. They're listed if there's a hotel with a restaurant, hotel without a restaurant, a commercial office type and so forth. All those classifications are things you don't normally see, right? And most of what we have talked about today is sort of like civilian taxes, right? Civilian property taxes. But of course, businesses all pay taxes, and businesses all have demands on our, on our system and our municipal, and well, well-asked and well-given. So another part is, that's very critical about water security, is that our municipal facilities are attacked, okay? They're attacked by hackers. And it requires a great deal of security to prevent entrance and even sabotage or ransoming our facilities. It's a cost of providing that water security that we all enjoy. We also have a duty on the sewer side to treat everything and reuse water as we can purchase it and reuse it over and over again. So that's a very competent, we have a very competent water facility and personnel group that keeps things secure. And we have the field people. So when there's a breakage or something, someone's showing up in the meter and so forth to see what's, whose side it's on. We reviewed a lot of the details of the flow switches and trying to help people to understand and identify when there are leaks in our homes, which is a tremendous waste of, of resource and also expensive, very expensive. I, I, I know some people in a condo that ended up with a $6,000 water bill, and the city helped them trace it down, essentially, but it was a 40-year-old condo. So all of these things on our side of the meter are extensive. And this is an enterprise, probably a very clear expense to, to figure out. It's, it's not very nebulous when you look at what they are projecting and, and some of the age of our facilities. We will be coming to a motion soon, but if there's a question, Councilmember Graham. Add your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's kind of a, almost a sequel here. We just raised your property taxes. We just raised your property taxes. I don't think this is the time to be raising people's costs. This economy and increase in cost of living, uncertain economy that's sitting, that we're looking at in front of us. You know, I know this is not a technically a tax, but it feels like a tax. You don't get to choose who your water company is from your house. That's your water company. Although I would choose Scottsdale Water if I had a choice. It was a good presentation, Brian, by the way, so thank you. And you have to have water, so it's not like, it's like, well, if you don't like it, just go to the next, go to the next company. It doesn't work that way. So I know it's not a tax, but it feels like one. We just raised your property taxes. We just raised user fees. And next year, we're gonna ask to raise your sales taxes. That's, that's true. We're gonna, we're not going to decide for you on this panel. We're gonna send it to the ballot and ask you to raise your sales taxes. So we've drastically expanded our population in Scottsdale, our housing volume and inventory. And we were told over and over, we were promised that this growth pays for itself. It fills the coffers. It floods the coffers. The tax base is so much wider and deeper, but we're coming back and asking you to pay more. Your cost of living in Scottsdale is going up. So instead of once again, we're, you know, talking about the most popular things that we spend money on, which, that's not even debate about the, the stuff that we like and that water security. We all value that up here. That's unanimous. But instead of looking at, instead of talking about that, instead of looking at ways we can get innovative and cut costs and keep Scottsdale, protect Scottsdale to be a very attractive, desirable place for low-cost of living, we're hiking fees again and rates. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will choose to go with option B in this packet and just to keep rates where they are. Thank you.
Okay, so you, that was a declaration, but there's not a motion yet. I, I think that there was some topics raised, and as a fair question, I would say, Councilman has questioned whether or not we have any programs to conserve and, and conservation. I'd like to know what we have, and I'd be glad to stay here an hour to listen to it, as well as when seniors or other people have problems paying their bills, what kind of funds we have, what kind of commitment as council we have made to water conservation. So please tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's not about rates, rates, rates. Let's go into some detail as, as Councilman Graham prodded.
Well, we have a very innovative conservation program, and that conservation program's been active for decades. We value conservation, and we continue to do that. As council has seen and on presentations to council recently about more initiatives that'll be coming forward to continue to encourage folks to save. We have a rebate program. The mayor also mentioned, what do we do for our customers? Well, I can tell you, we do many things that others don't do for their customers. So the, the mayor mentioned a leak situation. And we are one of the few cities in the valley that actually has a program where if it's a one-time event and you have a leak and you prove that leak, we'll give you a low-tier count, basically. So we'll charge you for that water, but we'll charge it at the lowest tier possible. And so we try to allow folks that have those situations to get the lowest bill possible and go forward. We also set up payment programs. We also have a utility assistance program that is funded to, initially funded to about $200,000 to allow folks that have problems to get, to come to us, to allow us to help them pay for those bills to get by. So we really care about our customers. We try to have these programs in place to help those who can't help themselves. And yet, we are an enterprise fund, so we do need those funds to ensure the water resources we need. One of the big draws that we have right now is for wells. We put a lot of water in the ground. We need ability to get that out. So some of the big drivers on the water side are for that. On the wastewater side, some of the big drivers are the reclamation facilities to treat that and recycle that water. Additionally, in water, we have impact fees. And so we charge businesses who come and develop, we charge them impact fees when, when we set those meters, so that new businesses, new homes, all pay impact fees. And those impact fees create the environment where growth pays for growth.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to Councilwoman Janik, then Councilmember Durham.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Beesmeyer, for a very nice presentation. We are leaders in the valley when it comes to water. We are ahead of the curve as those leaders. People look to us for guidance on the best way to conserve, on the best way to purify, all the different mechanisms involved in water use. I applaud our water department. I trust their judgment on how they bill us, on how they spend that money. So I am most definitely in support of these ordinances. And with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 4589 and adopt Resolution Number 12795.
Second. I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We also have continued conversation. Councilmember Durham, Vice Mayor Littlefield, and Councilwoman Caputi. Councilmember Durham.
Thank you, Mayor. What, what type of increase in our, in the cost of our water supply are we been facing last year and into the next year?
Yeah, our, our water supply costs have gone up tremendously, and I have a, I do have a slide on that. In addition to just the water supply alone, which would be from the SRP and CAP costs, we have chemical costs, additional costs in here. I have one to put up on Elmo that I presented earlier. If it works. There we go. So you can see, and it's a little hard to read here, but the first one is, is personnel cost, because it costs more to keep good personnel. And as I've mentioned, you know, there's, there's a shortage of skilled technicians in the valley, and we are dealing with that shortage. Then purchased water, the big one you just talked about, you can see how our costs have risen from less than $20 million a year to well over $22.6 million per year. And that's just raw water. That's just getting that water onboard. Electricity has gone up slightly. We have a innovative program for mitigating our electrical costs and ensuring that we optimize that cost. So we have been able to mitigate that cost, but there's, there's a limit to what we can do. And then treatment chemicals also have been going up tremendously. And so all those things impact us. And then addition to that, it's just the pure cost of capital that you saw on, on road projects, concrete, all those things in construction go up tremendously, and we have seen double-digit inflation that impacts us for doing capital projects. And it is costly, and, and do I wish it wasn't? I do. But we also have the obligation to provide our customers with first-class service, and to do that, we need the, we need the, the dollars to do that.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Littlefield and Councilwoman Caputi.
Thank you, Mayor. Water is an enterprise fund, and that means it lives within itself. It raises the money, it, it sends out the invoices, it collects the money, and that's the money they use to operate. Right now, I'm sure there's not a single person in this room that doesn't know that we are in a water, water shortage, and that we have to do the very best that we can in expanding the use of, and if possible, the, the amount of water that we have for our city and for those areas that we also are responsible for. So I am going to support this. I believe, as I've watched for eight years, Mr. Beesmeyer run the water department, I believe we have a fantastic staff there that are doing the very best possible in any way, shape, or form for handling the water and growing our water supply, maintaining our water supply, cleaning our water supply, all of the things that need to be done to do the very best for all of our citizens, to make sure and ensure we have a continuous source of water for all of us. So I think this is something that the city has ultimate responsibility for, for each and every citizen here and in our city, and I will be supporting this increase. Thank you.
Councilwoman Caputi.
What's the city motto? Simply better service for a world-class city? I'm sort of...
Yes, ma'am.
Sitting up here, listening to us splitting hairs about $7 a year for property tax rates, and I don't know the exact dollars that this works out to, but I think that, as you pointed out, you know, there were a lot of comments about inflation affecting residents. Well, inflation affects our city too, as we've said, and all of our costs have gone up as well. And we do want to preserve the ability to have simply better service for a world-class city. Our residents depend on it. We've said a million times from this dius that Scottsdale is special and different. There are cities and areas all over the valley right now that are struggling with really serious water issues. We are so fortunate here in Scottsdale that we don't have those same crises. We are able to provide our citizens with a plentiful source of water, and I think we have some of the lowest rates, as you've pointed out, as you look across the valley. And it's the same with the property tax rates, one of the lowest across the valley, and look at what we get for that, right? Everybody wants the things, and then we're arguing about the couple of dollars in order to allow us to deliver that exceptional amount of service. Things like being able to keep our neighborhoods safe, you know, and, and hiring more folks to, to help us deal with short-term rental rates, all of these things, water rates, I mean, that, the comment that we're just increasing costs and, and rates on residents, that's, that's one side of the equation. Costs and rates are going up in a, in a small amount, and again, in a environment in which costs are increasing exponentially on every level. And in return for that fairly minimal amount of increase, look at what we're able to deliver. Again, in my opinion, that's what makes us Scottsdale, and I'm completely supportive of making sure that we can continue to deliver the best possible service at the least possible cost. Thanks.
Okay, I see no other hands up. Hey, I'm, I'm told that the voting console is not working, so, or overhead. But it does show on my monitor?
We can't display it on the screen.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to the vote. Okay, so the display is, shows Councilmember Graham, no. Councilmember Durham, yes. Councilwoman Whitehead, yes. Mayor Ortega, yes. Vice Mayor Littlefield, yes. Councilwoman Janik, yes. And Councilwoman Caputi, yes. Six, yes. One, no. Councilmember Graham. Now we're gonna move on to item number 24. And by the way, we're gonna have like a seventh or an eight o'clock stretch before we get to item number 25. We'll see if that works. You want, let's, let's, you want a stretch? Okay, never mind, we're gonna continue. Let's go to item number 24, and I show two people, I believe, willing to, wanting to speak, but this has to do with item number 24, final public hearing on the fiscal year FY 2023-24 budget. This is presented by Sonia Andrews, City Treasurer, and so we'll make the presentation, then I'll hear the, make the public hearing, open public hearing. Proceed, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a very, very brief presentation, because we've had so many presentations on the budget and budget-related items already. So next slide, please. So as this slide shows, our presentations related to the budget, whether it's proposed fees or preliminary budget or CIP presentations started back in February, and this is the last step in our budget process where we have a final budget hearing and final budget adoption. Next slide. Our proposed budget for fiscal year 2324 is $2.53 billion, and I wanted to emphasize that the $2.53 billion is really made up of operating budgets, the grants and special districts, capital improvement budgets, and contingencies and reserves. So even though the budget is $2.53 billion, it's not that we're spending $2.53 billion. So if you look at the first orange box on the left, that is our operating budget, $722.8 million. That funds our core services, personnel costs, commodities and contracts, debt service and such. The grants and special districts of $16.3 million, those are self-funded by special dedicated revenues, like grants or dedicated revenues that fund those operations. The largest part of our budget is our capital improvement budget, which is $1.368.9 billion. Now, that is a capital budget that even though we are asking for authority for $1.368 billion for the fiscal year 2324, those funds will be spent over multiple years, because projects span multiple years. And finally, the $2.53 billion budget includes contingencies and reserves of $425.3 million. And the $425.3 million is necessary reserves for unexpected events, emergencies, and it's very important for the city that has a AAA rating to maintain adequate reserves. Next slide. And this slide shows we presented the tentative budget on May 16, and between the tentative budget and the final budget that we're asking council to consider tonight, there are some changes. However, the change is net to zero increase in the $2.53 billion. The changes are all within the capital budget, and as you can see on this slide, I tried to summarize the changes for you. We're really accelerating a couple of Westworld projects from fiscal year 2425 to fiscal year 2324, and we're deferring a couple projects from fiscal year 2324 to 2425. So if you would like specific information about why we're accelerating these projects or deferring these projects, our city engineer, Allison Timke, can, can go through that with
Continue.
Okay, so with that, that's my, my next slide is my last slide, and we are asking council to conduct a final public hearing, solicit public testimony on our proposed fiscal year 2324 operating budget and capital improvement plan as we present it tentatively and approve tentatively on May 16. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we would open for public comment on this item and item number 24, final public hearing on fiscal year 2023-24 budget. I have one person, James Rubot, wanting to address us. Please state your address. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, James Rubot, 9740 East Windrose. Boy, a lot of my thunder was taken in the last several people spoke on the budget and taxes, et cetera. So, but I want to say, I've been a Scottsdale homeowner for 34 years, and I was appalled by the $2.53 billion budget, but as she just explained, it's really not gonna spend that much, because that would have been 44% more than was actually spent last year. Now, there are some things like the general fund, which was supposed to increase by 75% to $250 million. And also, I don't know, on the bonds, the monies that had gone up on some of the, you know, anticipated bonds that you were gonna use special projects for, I don't know, but I mean, there are some ridiculous ones in my estimation, like $40 million for the sports field in the north side, and I believe it was $8.7 million for the railroad park museum, and $3.5 million for 31 tennis courts, when they only cost about $50,000 to $60,000 each to resurface. Anyways, as your handout illustrates, we are costing anywhere from a couple times to up to 10 times more per resident than other municipalities. Now, the big thing is, the average salary in Scottsdale municipal city is $90,000. When you add the benefits, retirement, health, et cetera, it's $130,000. And I believe that the figure is about $23,000 per year average that goes to retirement. These people will be pretty rich when they do retire. And the big thing that came up before was, and I mentioned last year about... And the big thing that came up before was, and I mentioned last year about police, we have about anywhere from 15 to 20% more police per resident than other municipalities. We could cut and loan some to Phoenix, who is hurting. And as far as I researched, we pay about 20% on average more than Phoenix does for our police. Likewise, last year on garbage, I suggested that we do recycling every other week and bulk every other month. That would save money and energy. Maybe some people would be laid off, but unfortunately, our federal government laid off many with the Keystone Pipeline. Likewise, water, you want to save, there are some ways that where you could save more in water and sewage. The whole key being is that there are ways to save. I wish you would look into some of the suggestions I have made, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you. With that, I see no other requests to speak. Therefore, I will close public, the public hearing on the budget. Moving on, Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you. I do appreciate the remarks, but I am making a motion to, after a long year of working on this, to adopt the final fiscal year 2023-24 budget. So.
Second.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait.
Excuse me. Did I miss something, Counselor? City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. It, it is so confusing every year. We have the hearing first. And then, at the end of this regular meeting, we will convene a special meeting because state law requires a special meeting when you actually adopt the budget. And you, you will make that motion during a separate meeting.
That's fine. Now, let's move on. Thanks.
My apologies.
Well, thank you very much. We have concluded the public hearing on the topic, item number 24. We will now move on to item number 25, Thomas Road, 56th Street to 73rd Street, Street Improvement Project, Real Property Acquisition. Our city engineer Allison Timku and Mark Melchenko will, is head of the Transportation and Streets. Yeah. By popular demand, we will have a, excuse me? Okay, well, we're going to continue straight away, and we have quite a few people waiting. We, I, I wanted us to just do a stretch, right? Okay, so, yeah, we're going to take a, a, a seven-minute break. Let's take a little stretch, and then we will begin fresh. Just a short recess. Welcome again. We are back to our city council regular meeting of June 13, 2023. We have item number 25, which is the Thomas Road, 56th Street to 73rd Street, Street Improvement Project, Real Property Acquisition. City engineer Allison Timku, Timku, as well as Mark Melchenko, Transportation and Streets Director. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Allison Timku, city engineer. The item you have before you is the Thomas Road improvements from 56th Street to 73rd Street, the real property acquisition. The action is to adopt Resolution 12791, authorizing the acquisition of easements and temporary construction easements for Thomas Road, 56th to 73rd Street, including the use of eminent domain if necessary. Can you queue up the other presentation, please? Thank you. Okay, so new land rights are needed for Thomas Road. We need easements for upgrading ramps to be American ADA compliant. We also need easements for new and existing traffic signal poles. And we need easements for two new streetlights. Additionally, a few temporary construction easements are also, will also be acquired, which are temporary land leases that gives the contractor room to do the work. These rights are needed whether we do the lane reduction or not. Based on our current design plans, approximately 1,200 square feet of sidewalk easement, 50 square feet of traffic signal easement, and 4,160 square feet of temporary construction easement is needed from nine property owners along the corridor. The segment of Thomas Road will require resurfacing if we don't do the lane reduction project. And with resurfacing, we also need to go in and make all the ADA improvements when we do the resurfacing, so that land acquisition is required regardless. So I'm just going to go through the corridor and show you each section where we will be needing to acquire land rights. This is at the northwest corner of Thomas Road and Sixia Street. You can see the area that's highlighted in red. We need easement of 75 square feet for new ADA ramp and new traffic signal pole. This is Thomas Road, 61st Place, on the south side. We need 200 square feet of easement for two new ADA ramps, land rights for existing traffic signal poles, and some temporary construction easement. This is Thomas Road on the west side of 68, west of 68th Street. On the south side, we need easement at 50 square feet for two new streetlights. This is in conjunction with the undergrounding of the existing SRP overhead electric. And because our streetlights are currently on those poles, we would need to install two new streetlights there.
Excuse me. So on that, on that picture, the, the shadows are the existing poles right now? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, so they're the same location, but those are exceedingly close. I saw one just six inches away from the curb in one case. Anyway.
Yeah, I do believe that they're really close, and they're actually and they're actually blocking the sidewalk in some areas, making it difficult to pass. So we would make it ADA accessible.
I just thought I'd mention that we can see the shadows of the existing.
That's correct. This is Thomas Road, east of 68th Street, on the north side. That's temporary construction easement there, and that's just basically room for the contractor to do the work to the sidewalk improvements that would be required. Thomas Road and 68th Street, on the south side. This is two new ADA ramps for ADA and ADA compliance at existing driveways, and temporary construction easement as well. This is Thomas Road and 68th Street, on the south side. Easement of 200 square feet, two new ADA ramps, land rights for existing traffic signal poles, and temporary construction easement. This is Thomas Road and 70th Street, on the south side. Require 22 square feet of easement for ADA-compliant sidewalk and existing traffic signal pole, as well as 58 square feet of temporary construction easement. And then this is, this is the largest temporary construction easement that we would be acquiring, and this is for the bus stop that's at Thomas Road, east of Scottsdale Road, on the north side. So we do have some safety concerns with this bus stop because it's not close enough to the intersection, and we do have a lot of pedestrians crossing mid-block, which we know is not safe. So we would like to move that closer to the intersection so people use the crosswalk to access the bus bay. And that concludes the presentation for the acquisition of land rights for the Thomas Road project.
Thank you. At this point, we have many speakers, people wishing to speak. Okay, Councilmember Durham, and then Mike can go into public.
We can go to the public comment.
Okay, thank you. Accordingly, we will go to the speakers who requested and registered with our clerk. Please name your place of address. Temma Moss, Peter Lenton, and the third speaker, Marilyn Atkinson. So if we could start off with Temma Moss, and then Peter Lenton. Please come forward. You have three minutes. State your name, place of residence, and thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Temma Moss. My address is 19700 North 76th Street. I live in North Scottsdale. Between the years of 2020 and 2022, I lived in the Arcadia area of Phoenix at 47th Street and Thomas Road. Keep in mind that this was during COVID, when traffic was a lot lighter than usual. So during the time I lived in Arcadia, I would drive down Thomas Road several times a week to access the 101. Thomas is a very busy road, and it is a major route to get on and off the 101. An alternative is to take Indian School, which has even heavier traffic. You cannot remove lanes from Thomas Road without disrupting the lives of people who use it to commute to other parts of the valley, or impacting the businesses who rely on customers to get to their location. It is also unreasonable to assume that someone who lives in Arcadia but works in North Scottsdale could ride their bike or take public transportation to get to work every day. I am all for making Scottsdale a more walkable and bike-friendly city. I lived in downtown Chicago for over 15 years, so I'm very familiar with walking to the grocery store and taking public transportation. I would love for Scottsdale residents to have that option. However, there are other ways to accomplish this without obstructing access to a major freeway. And with that, I encourage you to vote no on the Thomas Road project.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I do want to point out that the agenda item, the agenda item is for the acquisition, as stated, for light poles and ADA access. That is the question tonight. It's not about getting to North Scottsdale or any restriping. The agenda item, please focus on that only. And I'm saying that because when we yield the, when we yield to your comment, you must stay on point and not get into the other subject of whatever purpose realignment of lines may be. So I'm gonna, I'm going to ask you to do that. Again, confine only to these intersections. We feel that there's some safety issues, and it's already been reported how the, the issue that's on the agenda. I also ask, and my peers know, that we're only confined to the issue that's on the agenda. The issue that's on the agenda is and has to do with being able to install lights and, streetlights safely in the safe locations, and also to acquire a temporary, a temporary use of property we don't own, okay? It's, it's owned by the adjacent property owner. And after we use or install what we have to do, then we have to restore that property, which we have temporary easement for. We pay for that, and that's, that's what's been the topic for today. So I am moving on. Again, I, I need to remind you of that because, again, our peers are not here to discuss future transport or how somebody's going to bike across town or not. We are limited to, as is said, getting the land that we need for the bus stop to work safely, as well as the other items that are on the agenda. There'll be another day to discuss whatever other improvements you may feel you would like to speak to. But we are holding to that rule as well, because we have to comply with our own open meeting. I hope you will focus on the questions that are here. We will now go to Peter Lenton and then Marilyn Atkinson. I do not see Peter Lenton, Marilyn Atkinson. Please come forward. After Marilyn, we have Jacqueline Quinn, and then maybe Linda Scorso. She declined the first time, but we'll see. Go ahead, Marilyn. Please, again, focus on the subject that we're dealing with right now.
I am here tonight. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to change my remarks a little bit. One of the things that I am going to say, which is probably maybe considered inappropriate, but I noticed that there has been a push to try to change the name Diet Road. The idea is, is that you make it a name that nobody knows what it means.
Marilyn, I'm just going to say that this subject is not necessarily what we're doing here. Excuse us, excuse us, please. I will repeat, I will repeat the, because some people may have arrived late. Excuse me, sir. No, we, I'm asking for that because I don't want a definition. Excuse me, sir. That's enough.
Thank you.
Marilyn, you know what I mean. Thank you. Okay, we have an agenda, agendized item, and I will, excuse me. Excuse me, sir, you're, you don't have, you're on the list to speak, and you can speak when you're called upon. Next, we will have Jacqueline Quinn, Linda Scorso, Jan Dubikas. So let's go with Jacqueline Quinn. If you could focus on the subject. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council members. My name is Jan Dubaskis. I live in D.C. Ranch. I'm here to talk about the, the project today. You know, one of the concerns that we've had is that there has been a lot of upheaval around these roads and around these projects. And then there's concerns from the citizens about eminent domain, easements, temporary or permanent. There's a lot of consternation and, and a lot of uncomfortableness. And I think one of the things that's great about Scottsdale is that we have a beautiful city with a number of citizens who are engaged and involved. And it's wonderful to hear feedback from those folks. And I think what we're hearing today and other days is that there's just a lot of uncertainty right now. And, you know, eminent domain, that causes, again, more uncertainty with people. What's going to happen with their property? And how's that going to affect them, short term and long term? You know, one of the things that we heard at the last work study was that our data is a little bit out of touch because it's older. And one of the things that Councilwoman Janik asked was, could we get newer data? And the answer was yes. The new data is coming. It's going to be here in a few months. It's actually not one, two, three years away. So one of the things that I would suggest, that I would think would be hopeful, helpful, is maybe we should consider these projects when that new data is available. Since we have this angst now about eminent domain, we have eminent, we have concerns about, is this a road diet? I would suggest that the council consider this project down the road when fresher data is available. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Marcus Tork and Paul Rowe. While we're waiting here, again, we, we will continue with the public comment. And please know that the staff has prepared, and the agenda items are listed when we are purchasing, purchasing land by an agreeable seller, okay? And purchasing the temporary right or easement to cross over and install that sidewalk or install that street light. That is an engineering operation. So we are not discussing the general topic of taking or otherwise. We're looking at property in the public walkways that the city feels need to be improved. And these have gone through the Transportation Commission at these sites. Accordingly, let's go on to Marcus Tork and Paul Rowe. Okay, I'm going to continue with public comment before I get to our own, if that's okay?
I just had a quick question, Mayor, if I may ask. So I think some of the residents feel like they, this kind of relates to the road diet project, and we're saying, no, you can't talk about that. And that feels a little bit, they feel a little bit, I don't know, displeased with that. And so my question, here's my question, though. Right after this section, if that's the rules, right after this section, there's a public comment section.
Yes, they can, they can come up then.
So right after this, if you want to talk about road diets, right after that, you can tell the city clerk, and he'll let you speak on that.
There are five spots remaining on the second, on the second public comment, and people are welcome to do that. I, I would display the rule if you'd like, but I see our clerk stepped away. And the, the rule is that the presiding yields the floor to either the public or to one another, and the, we must stick to the subject. And the subject is as posted, not beyond that. And that's why we'll make it smooth, and those, there will be an opportunity for five to speak on that subject. Any, the next ones that are listed, excuse me, is that adequate for you to see that?
Oh, I, it just feels like we're being a little strict with that rule about what people can and can't talk about.
I'll show you the rule. It's, it's 10.6. And 10.6 is, in fact, here. Upon recognition by the presiding, and this would have been up, up there, the official shall confine his or her remarks and questions to the issue under debate as agendized. And, and I'm saying that because that's how we'll flow with the information. And you've just mentioned that certainly there's the opportunity at public comment because the term and this other discussion is.
The city engineer just mentioned lane reduction.
Well, the, the, she, she said it was irrelevant to it. That's what she said. So that's, that's what she said. Now, she said either way, the acquisition and what's on the agenda pertains to the, the purchase of property and easement for these, whether or not anything is funded later or not. So that was a pretty clear indication not opening it up.
Well, I, I'll conclude my, my point of order question. I would just say that if, if it's gray or on the line, we should err on the side of letting more people speak than fewer, and that would be my preference. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I think, I thank you, and I think I've already called some names that some have apparently left before. So we do have five openings for that discussion, and you can do so. And thank you for bringing that up. Next, again, I'm trying to.
I would like to make a comment.
Yes.
And it's not a nice comment, but it needs to be made.
Yes.
This is the first time you've enforced that rule. All of us have spoken off-topic, and it was never stopped. Why is tonight the night? No, no, I'm, I'm tired of this nonsense. It is not okay. We know if we pass A, then it will be B, and you have never enforced this rule before.
Excuse me, and the rest of that sentence is, thou shalt not refrain from personal attacks and in decorious language. That's a rule that you and I, and the whole group, yes? Just a second, just a second. We had a complete work study. We had two and a half hours on that subject.
I know.
And, and that's a good thing. And we can have continuation. This subject will come up again in, in, on its own day. But to, to get into that when the engineers have prepared something for our use, and we're going to be making decisions regarding what the topic as posted. So I, I just, unfortunately, I hear a lot of anger there, but I have.
There is anger, and I wish you would be consistent.
There will be five other individuals, and right now I see, by the way, on the list of previous, I have Tom Frankel, Mike Peterson, Marissa Hamilton, Bob Penjman. I already called Marcus Tork and, yeah, so we still have five people left on this subject, if you would like. And there's an opportunity that is a correct opportunity, actually, as Councilmember Graham pointed that out. So it's a good thing. We heard some of this at the beginning of the meeting. Ms. Janik, all right. Next, we will continue with those on the list. And if you wish to speak to the agenda item, you can. If not, please list your name, or we can defer to the next items on the agenda, okay? Thank you. The, the next person I, I called, Paul Rowe and Marcus Tork. I did not see anyone come forward, but.
Oh, it's Paul's right here.
Right there.
Oh, and Mr. Paul Rowe, you spoke, thank you, on the budget, I think, before. Thank you. I'm trying to keep track of everything, and I'm trying to keep order for our, the smooth flow of this meeting. Thank you so much, sir, for your patience.
Back by popular demand, my name's still Paul Rowe, and I still live in Villa Monterey. In light of the recent colloquy between you and Councilman Graham, I, I would like to, if possible, defer and make my comments after this specific issue.
Thank you, no problem.
If that is allowed. I will say I find it rather disingenuous that this is made clear at this time. I sort of feel as though the rug's been pulled out from under us. But I shall, I shall refrain for now and then make my comments shortly.
Thank you, and I will just point out, we do have rules. I will ask the clerk to put them up. You can leave them up. It's just a matter of order that I'm trying to maintain. So at this point, I see, Ms. Janik, did you want to take the button off? Or it shows that you still, okay, we will continue with public comment. Excuse me. At this point, we have an option or to hear from Ms. Marissa Hamilton, if you'd like to speak now, or wait till public comment, it's fine. Then Mike Peterson and Tom Frankel.
My name is Marissa Hamilton, Mayor, members. I find the display here tonight very concerning. You all sit there governing with the consent of the governed. This meeting doesn't. This meeting doesn't belong to you. This meeting belongs to we, the people. And in reference to that item, I think I mentioned before that I worked at the City of Phoenix City Council, and I'm very familiar with the games that we are seeing in front of us. Essentially, this meeting has just become an act of ceremony. I heard many times tonight, mag this, mag that. It seems like you're subservient to this entity that doesn't, that the people here didn't elect. The time here, the time of public comment, is actually for the people and by the people.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate if you wish to speak to the agenda item or the validity of the item.
I am speaking to the item, sir.
I'm listening to that portion of it.
Mayor, I am speaking to the item, and you're taking my time. The issue, the issue here at hand is about eminent domain, and the people here are using their speech to protect the property rights of the citizens here. And so you also, we also just found out that your data is outdated, so you're irresponsibly making a vote without having the proper data. You've already disturbed and disrespected your fellow council members. I think that you need to take the time to cool off, get the proper data in front of you, let the citizens be fully informed with what you're actually voting on, and just table this issue today. Table it and have a comprehensive look at the agenda item so that you have full transparency as to what the voters in front of you can actually understand what you're voting on. Creating this, like, ceremony, this, like, song and dance, this let-them-eat-cakes speeches one after another, is really just unnecessary, and it's disrespectful to your constituents. And I just want to remind you who gave you consent to govern. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, we will continue. Again, some people arrive late. We don't need, we're trying to keep this flow of the meeting and stick and focus to the agenda item. If I have to say it again, I will, because that's how I'm focused. That's how we prepare. Next, we have Mike Peterson and Tom Frankel.
May I begin?
Yes, please do.
Once again, ladies and gentlemen of Scottsdale City Council, I have a couple simple questions. Example, on 20, on item 25, you're using eminent domain. For what reason? What is eminent domain exactly? It's theft. That's all eminent domain is. It's the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few, so let's just steal from the few, steal from the business owners. That's exactly what eminent domain is. My second question is, as of this morning at 9:00 a.m., the comment cards from the April 17th meeting were not included in the council report. Why were any of these? That's censorship. That's censorship of everybody who does not agree with your eminent domain push. And then I'm also looking at who really is responsible for suppressing public comment on this. And then we go back to a statement that one of you city council members said earlier today. I keep hearing road diets and public comments, but all we're doing is making our roads bigger and better. Well, here's a question. How are you making it bigger and better if you're taking a lane out, you're taking a sidewalk out, and you're stealing somebody's business? Honestly, that's all I got to say.
And again, if, if someone wants to discuss things outside, they may. Tom Frankel. Okay. Now, did I miss? Excuse me. Sorry. Chris Rodriguez and Bob Petchman.
All right. Hello. My name is Chris Rodriguez. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. I'm the president and CEO of Ability 360. We're a nonprofit that operates in the greater Phoenix area, including Scottsdale. We provide, we've been providing for over 40 years, a wide array of different supports and services for people with disabilities so that they can exercise maximum independence in the community as opposed to having to be regulated to living in more congregate-type settings like nursing homes, assisted living homes, and places like that. I want to speak here today because I do want to encourage Scottsdale, which is such an incredible place of inclusion, such a special place to live, to reevaluate their compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act that was passed bipartisanly over 33 years ago. And insofar that this decision that you're contemplating now would increase access for the millions of people across the country and the thousands of individuals that live here in Scottsdale that do require some of these accommodations, that are something that is certainly the right thing to do, but also it's in compliance with the law, I would certainly support those things. So with that, I just want to encourage, again, if this is the measure that would allow the City of Scottsdale to be a more inclusive place for people who have visual impairments, for people who use walkers, for people who are in wheelchairs, then Ability 360 and myself as a resident of the City of Scottsdale certainly do support that, and we hope, and I encourage you all to support it as well.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Bob Petchman. And I think that was the last person on this item, but go ahead.
Mayor Ortega, with all due respect, you cannot separate road diet from this project. And don't shut me up, okay? Because I'm going to tell you why. Let's show that on the, on the projector, please. If you note, this is the comment, this is the city's own comment card from the April 17th Design Center Open House, which many of you are at. You notice what it says here? Thomas Road Complete Street Project. Anybody in the industry knows that complete street equals road diet. So you've already admitted that this is a road diet project. It's here. It's right on here. Secondly, if we go to your, the agenda item for this agenda, not some other foreign agenda that you're accusing us to be talking about, this agenda, page 56, before, after, you're eliminating a car lane, you're adding two bike lanes. That's a road diet. It's part of this packet, this agenda, and you are silencing people from speaking against it. One more page, page 57. Again, same thing, existing, proposed. These are pages on your agenda that you're voting on. And furthermore, staff censored 34 comment cards out of the, guess what? Thomas Road Open House, not some other open house. This, this is really going to be really, really, really bad, and I hope that you guys can get your acts together.
Thank you, sir. Next, any other person wishes to speak to the agenda item on acquisition? Thank you. Any comment from my Councilwoman Whitehead?
Okay, so this has been a really tough meeting, and there is a lot of misinformation out there. The, this is not, a road diet is not on tonight's agenda, and if, and there is misinformation in the ICU, that's nice. This is about, this is about repaving a road, and there were mistakes. I mean, by presenting it as a single project, got a lot of people riled up, and I agree with what Ms. Dabakas said. We know the data. We do data every two years. You know what would happen if we did it more often? It would cost you money. And we just heard that people don't want to pay more taxes. So we schedule our, we schedule our traffic counts every two years. No decision is going to be made on how many lanes we restripe after we repave the road. There's no decision tonight on that, and it's not going to be an easy decision. Because when we make decisions, there's, so maybe there's 100 of you here who wrote us letters, there's 240,000 people that live in the city. And so we need to make that decision based on data, and it'll be updated data. We need to make that decision based on a lot of community input, with special emphasis on the people that live in the corridor. And we need to make that decision based on, on people with special needs. And actually, tonight, that's what we're here to discuss. So a yes vote does not change the width of the road. It does not change the number of lanes, and it doesn't come close, because this city council does really take public input incredibly seriously. And I held a work-study session specifically to ask that roads be removed from road diets, and I could not get support from my colleagues. So I'm the only one who got up here and asked to have some of these roads, proposed for road diets, removed. So I'm, it's going to go back to the Transportation Commission. But my point is, tonight, and I know it's not what people came here to hear, but tonight is about acquisition, which is not theft, we have to pay for the property, to enable lights changing and to enable better, safer access as required by law for people with disabilities. So a yes vote today makes our streets safer for people with disabilities and, and changes our lights and the other items that were up. It does not change the lanes, and it allows us to pave the road. For anybody who lives there, you know the road needs to be paved. We cannot, as a city, pave the road unless we're ADA compliant. So a yes vote allows us to be ADA compliant and allows us to pave the road. Now, a no vote prevents the city from repaving the road and prevents us from being accessible or compliant for ADA. Neither yes or no changes the number of lanes in the road. It just doesn't. That's not what you want to hear, and I know there's been a lot of misinformation out there, but this rowdy meeting tonight, just hang on. We're going to have this rowdy meeting, but we have to repave the road, well, we have to be, get it scheduled to repave the road, and then we will discuss what do we want it to look like afterwards. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight. So thank you. And I'm going to support, I always support making our roads safer, and I have no opinion whatsoever on whether this five-lane road should be four lanes. I only know that it needs to be repaved, and I only know that I want to be ADA compliant, and I want to make our sidewalks safer for everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Durham, Councilmember Graham, Councilwoman Janik.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything Councilmember Whitehead just said. Restriping the roads is not on the agenda tonight, no way. It's just not on the agenda. We're not voting on that. We may vote on it sometime in the future, but that night is not tonight. And most of the emails we get concerning the restriping say, take this money and fix the roads. Well, that's what we're doing tonight. We are voting to improve this road, and that includes repaving it, fixing it up, ADA compliance. So we're doing exactly what everyone has been asking us to do in emails, which is fix the road, improve the road, and that's what's going on tonight. And it's kind of remarkable that people oppose us doing anything to fix the roads after we've gotten so many emails asking us to fix the roads. So that's right, this has nothing to do with the restriping. It's for, it's simply for purchasing the property. And on that score, I wanted to ask a question of Allison, if I could.
Yeah. Please, please keep quiet. Thank you very much for, are you done?
Allison's coming up, and I just have a quick question. Why are we buying or acquiring easements for existing light poles? In a number of places, it said we're, we're getting easements for poles that are already there, and I'm just not sure why we are acquiring property for poles that are already there.
Okay. Councilmember Durham, let me find one.
Yeah, that's one right there. It says land rights for existing, the one you were just on.
Okay, correct. So in some of these situations, when we modify the sidewalk and the sidewalk ramp to become ADA compliant, we have to move the existing traffic signal pole to be able to do that.
All right.
We do have a couple of situations where our existing traffic signal pole is actually outside of our right-of-way, so we would be correcting that as well at the same time.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. And, you know, Councilmember Graham, I do want to say, all the exhibits are here to show where the property line is. In many cases, these corner properties are rectangular. In order to get the, we're buying that triangle so they can put a ADA compliant ramp and a new light pole there. So those lots are square, and we need to get these little remnants. They're all in the packet. You can see each, each case, what is purchased so that we can, you know, take care of these municipal lights and ADA compliance. Okay. Councilmember Graham, Councilwoman Caputi.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just say that I've been on commissions and boards and now council for 11 years. I've never seen a topic outrage people that I can think of more than this. And, you know, this is a component of the lane reduction project on Thomas. We know whether we want to wall it off, and we don't want you to talk about it or not, I don't understand why we're so afraid to hear from residents on it. I'd say, let them go up, and even if they're slightly off-topic, just hear them out and then move on. Once again, I don't think we should devalue anybody's opinion based on their zip code. Sometimes we hear that. And so I just think overall, cutting residents off when they've taken time out of their day to talk to us, and we should hear from them. We should give them a full hearing, hear them out. One comment I want to mention about the Thomas Complete Streets project is about public safety, and I was doing some research here, and it's interesting because we have a natural experiment of the Thomas Road traffic data, because east of Scottsdale Road is four, is two lanes, four lanes each way, and west of Scottsdale Road is where the five lanes are, that we're going to make four lanes. And if you go look at the city's own traffic collision rates, traffic data, the five lanes to the west have substantially lower collision rates than the four lanes to the east, by a measure of 2.8 to 1.6. We have a natural experiment in our own city. We can see which is safer. You can argue this or that, there's variables that play, but we can look from the city's own data from 56 to Scottsdale, the five lanes there are substantially safer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caputi, Councilwoman Janik, Vice Mayor Littlefield.
Thank you. So we judge each project based on its own merit when we sit up here, and we are going to have a hearing on the Thomas Road Complete Streets. I don't actually have a problem if we would have heard from folks tonight. It's just, we're not voting on that tonight. I absolutely have an opinion on the Thomas Road Complete Street, but it's not appropriate to what we're doing tonight because we haven't heard a presentation, we don't have the information in front of us, and that's not what we're being asked to vote on. So again, I don't think anyone up here is trying to necessarily quell the public opinion. We, of course, want to hear you. We read all the comments on our emails. We have public outreach meetings. We are certainly going to have a multiple-hours-long meeting on whether or not we do a Thomas Complete Street on Thomas Road, and I'm sure there will be lots of opinions and conversations, and we will make a vote, and that is a separate issue. I think it just can't be emphasized enough that if we don't go ahead and acquire what we need to tonight, we can't repave the street. The staff has explained this to me many times. So if we vote no, we can't make these streets ADA compliant, which I'm pretty sure we have to do legally, and we also cannot repave. So that's what we're voting on. I mean, we can certainly hear hours' worth of conversation on the Complete Street, but that's not what we're voting on. So it puts us in a really weird situation. Again, we're trying to focus on what's in front of us tonight, and this is what we're agendized to speak on. Just one quick question, one quick comment in terms of data. Absolutely, we want to use the most current data on every decision we make, but, but please remember that in. remember that in something like a traffic study, we gather the data for decades. We certainly don't make a decision as important as our streets based on something that might have happened, you know, that moment. It's, we're making decisions based on decades of data and also looking forward into the future and trying to figure out what that all looks like. So, agree, we always need to keep our data current, but it's not made at a point in time. It's a continuum and massive collection of data that goes into that. So, again, I'm trying very hard to hear everybody, but also focus on what has to happen tonight. And if we allow the pressure to force us to vote no, we're not, it's not, that's not what we're voting on. We really need to fix this street. We will absolutely have a conversation about whatever has to happen later, later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Janik, Vice Mayor Littlefield.
All right. Contrary to what some of my fellow council members have said, I believe everything was accurate that was in the packet. It was not a mistake, because we all know that what is tied to this project is the narrowing of Thomas Road. And I have received emails that the narrowing of Thomas Road had been approved years ago, and this is the only stopgap measure we have to bring it to a vote of the citizens, which is where it belongs.
Thank you. Next, Vice Mayor Little, sorry, you're done? Thank you. Councilwoman Whitehead. Oh, sorry. Vice, sorry, Vice Mayor and then Councilwoman Whitehead. Please go ahead.
It disappeared.
Yeah, it switched on.
Well, I'm very sorry that this is happening tonight. I also misunderstood what was going to be talked about, and I spent three days writing a speech. I think it's pretty good, but I'll save it for next time. I do think that this is an error. This is what was put out, we see the date, for tonight's agenda item. And on part of this, as I went through it, it's the narrowing of the streets, right there. So, yeah, it is all part of one and the same parcel, but if we're only going to be talking about a certain piece of it, I'll read that piece from my speech, and we'll make it happen that way, but it has to come back to us. The problem with doing it this way is when you pull it into pieces and bits like this, and each little bit gets approved, then at the end, it's so much easier to just approve one more little bit, and it just kind of seeps that way. So I think that's what's going on here. I think staff knew that the citizens didn't want this, and this is the way they want to try and make it happen. So don't forget it, come back. Thank you.
Next, Councilwoman Whitehead.
Yeah, I just, again, I guess I wanted to point out to Councilwoman Janik, yeah, the entire project was on, or the reclassification was on the 2016 Transportation Action Plan, and the only person on the council at that time was Councilwoman Littlefield, and she approved it at that time. But I just want to double-check for the sake of everybody here. This cannot, the road, the lane configuration cannot be changed tonight, and it cannot be, or it cannot be changed without another vote. So this isn't some, you know, way to bypass our residents. And again, as I've pointed out many times, is there anybody on staff who wants to confirm, there she is, Allison, that this will be coming back for a vote? If the transportation staff wants to recommend a change in configuration, then it will come back to council, and I think it'll go through the Transportation Commission, too. So this is not a done deal.
Yes, Councilwoman Whitehead, we would have to come back to council for basically the award of a construction project that would be doing that. Additionally, this is a typical process. When we are acquiring right-of-way on projects, it is almost always a separate council action. It's not something that we're doing in a special situation here. This is the way, we almost always do it, unless we have a contract that's going for award at the same time. But if you look back, we have many, many right-of-way acquisitions that just come on their own as an item for you to vote on. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Allison. So the reason we do things in pieces like this is to protect your interests, because if we vote on a project one time and things change, then there's not as much transparency. So I'm not going to convince this crowd, but that is why we do it. So tonight's vote simply allows us to pave the road and make the sidewalks ADA compliant. And I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12791, Thomas Road, 56th Street to 73rd Street Improvement Project, real property acquisition, and you have my commitment, and from our city engineer, we'll be back if there's any effort to change the configuration of the lanes. And the road will not narrow, by the way. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you want to speak to your second?
I just wanted to say one more thing in this. We are not bound by pictures in a pamphlet. We're bound by what's on the agenda. And so we are voting on items on the agenda, and there is nothing in the items on the agenda that says anything about complete streets or road diets or whatever. So there's simply nothing in the agenda that we're voting on, and as Allison has just explained, if we decide to vote on that in the future, it'll come back, and it'll be clear in the agenda what we're voting on. And we're not voting on that tonight. We're not voting on pictures. We're voting on words and resolutions in the agendas, which have nothing to do with complete streets.
Okay, I will just conclude with this comment. Okay, once, once a deficiency is noted by the responsible party, we have 1,100 miles of roadway that the city is liable for, that would have to have correct lighting and access and so forth, and you know we get sued left and right. So once we identify it, once the engineering identifies it, you don't just say, well, now we're going to ignore that particular issue. That's why, as a pragmatic response, this has to be done, and there's no, there are other areas on Thomas Road that do not have an acquisition, where some improvements will be made, a new street light, new signals. But fortunately, they have, we have enough right-of-way to do it that we own. So that's, it would be sort of negligent not to, once we identify a particular location, to not do it. And that's why it's so important that this is in the correct process, and there's no subterfuge about not having an ADI, ADA compliant, or somebody getting off a bus too far into the block and having a dangerous situation that we have identified. So I will support the motion. Please record your vote.
Nope, not being good there.
Okay.
No, still not being good.
What's happening is, this was occurring before, it's not record, oh, we will reboot, and let's see if it records. If not, we will have to do a roll call.
Out there.
Oh, good, good. It's going, it's showing up. And so we have, Councilman Graham is no, Vice Mayor Littlefield, no, Councilwoman Janik, no. The motion carries four to three. Thank you. We will be moving on to public comment. And at this point, I have noted that Mr. Rowe, let's see, I was trying to carry my own list, Paul Rowe, would you like to please speak? And we have Mike Peterson and Yvonne Cahill. I think you had asked for some time, hadn't you? So please, please start, lead off there. And so we have three speakers. Public comment, you have three minutes, and speak on any non-agendized item.
Maybe the third time's the charm.
You're good.
It's disingenuous not to believe that the changes put forth in Issue 25 will not lead to further changes in this roadway in the future. Addressing the issue of ADA access, sidewalks are in place to accommodate, those people are ready. It's hard to believe that people requiring special access can not be, can, not to believe that they can be accommodated by other means without violating ADA compliance requirements. And I'll just add that personally, if the council members are willing to sign a resolution now committing to never vote to reduce the number of lanes on Thomas Road of traffic during their remaining tenure on the council, I'll be happy to change my position on this issue.
Thank you. Next, we have Yvonne Cahill. And again, I'm just trying to repeat, please try to keep silent, and that'll keep things moving along. Thank you. Yvonne Cahill, and then Mike Peterson.
Yes, Mayor Ortega and councilmembers, just wanted to give you a point of clarification on the earlier question you had on the property tax waiver. So for income for a single person, you have to have no more than $36,000 a year, and for married, $45,000 for a couple, and that includes your social security. So that number is, like, so low, and that's why people, hardly anybody qualifies for that. The second thing I wanted to point out is eminent domain is a very slippery slope. Tonight, I've heard about you increasing taxes. I've heard about you increasing the amount for water. I've heard that you are going to go onto people's property that make, you know, have plants that you consider invasive, and to me, that's trespassing. So I'm very concerned about the direction. Also, I'd just like to say that this whole road diet is all here because you guys are getting money from the federal government, and that's what this is all about. It's federal money, and anytime you take money from the federal government, it takes away the rights of the citizens. Thank you.
Next, we have Mike Peterson. Excuse me, Mike, did you speak the previous, oh, nevermind, go ahead.
I, once, once again, I find it very, very interesting how the item that everybody was here for, you save the best for last, so it makes it a point to where all the other issues really, really, I'm just reviewing your meeting with this part, and I'm going to say, I love how you save the best for last to make everybody engaged in the water issue, the invasive plant issue. I mean, through Invasive Species Act and your ability, there's another way you can steal property from people. We're protecting the environment, so you got an invasive shrub or a type of grass we don't like around here, we're going to go ahead and steal your house, too. I mean, that's obviously what you were saying with that act earlier. So you have public nuisances as a way to use eminent domain on people? Oh, so let's just steal that, too. I mean, Scottsdale should be about making greatness, making something, build something, but, I mean, since clearly we're looking at a communism outbreak here, communism doesn't know how to make anything, it just knows how to take, 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 take. And it would, I mean, it would be really nice if you guys tried to become artists, build something, write a speech, build a garden, actually do something that involves making something? I don't know, take a cooking class? Any of that would be better than, you have something I want. Mine? Lattes.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public comment. And next, we will go to receipt of citizen petitions. I refer to the clerk. If part of our charter allows for citizens to present a petition at the clerk's office, we have received none, so accordingly, that item, citizen's petition, is closed. Moving on to Item Number 27, Boards and Commissions Task Force Nominations. These are the nominations only for various board openings. I will now turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Littlefield for the Boards, Commissions, and Task Force nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, the City Council will be nominating Scottsdale residents interested in serving on citizen advisory boards, commissions, and committees. The Scottsdale City Council is responsible for establishing city policies and enacting laws in support of these policies. The council relies on volunteer, citizen-based boards and commissions to research issues and make recommendations in support of the council's missions and goals. The information and recommendations provided by the council-appointed advisory boards is a valuable tool for helping council members in their deliberations. Appointments for these positions will be made at a special City Council meeting on Tuesday, June 27, 2023. So let's get started. Our first committee is the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. There is one opening. The Citizens Bond Oversight Committee receives reports on the city's progress in implementing the bond program, reviews any proposed project's changes to the program, and provides comments to City Council with respect to the bond program as the committee deems appropriate. Michael Heinz resigned in February. There is one vacancy and nine applications. And please excuse me if I mess up the names. The applicants are Frank Bertone, Brian Coughlin, Joe Dubois, Austin Fairbanks, Rudy Fisher, Darrell Comescu, Robert Rogers, Robert Simons, and Carl Stein. We'll begin nominations with Councilwoman Janik.
I nominate Joe Dubois.
Councilwoman Caputi. Robert Rogers.
Mr. Fairbanks.
Rudy Fisher.
Joe Dubois.
Austin Fairbanks.
I'm sorry, Mayor, what was your vote, Mayor?
Dubois.
Dubois, thank you.
And it doesn't say to say anything at this point, so I'll just move on. Our next board is the Historic Preservation Commission, and there is one opening. The Historic Preservation Commission oversees the development and the management of Scottsdale's historic preservation program. There are special qualifications. As outlined in the Scottsdale City Code, each member shall have demonstrated special interest, knowledge, or experience in at least one of the following: building construction, history, architectural history, real estate, historic preservation law, or any other historic preservation-related field. Mr. John Griffin resigned in February, and there is one vacancy and two applicants. The applicants are Michael Buchek and Jay Panzer. We'll begin with Councilwoman Caputi.
Michael Buchek.
Me.
No.
Very good.
Barry Graham, Councilwoman.
Pardon me. Mr. Panzer?
No additional.
We're done. Both candidates have been nominated. Thank you. Next is the Library Board. There is one opening. The Library Board advises the City Council on general policy relating to programs, services, and future development of the Scottsdale Public Libraries. Fred Klein resigned in April. There is one vacancy and 18 applicants. The applicants are Sue Boldick, Nitin Chopra, Jan Dubakis, Jennifer Fabriano, Eric Gold, George Hartz, Paige Harvey, Bonnie Kaplan, Kushbu Kalil, Marcy Custua, Adam Lyons...
Kusbu Khalil, Marcy Custua, Adam Lyons, Don McCormick, Sean McCracken, Fannie Obermann, Miranda Shelter Whitmer, Denise Seidlow, Lesley Totten, and Christine Wilson. We'll begin with Councilman Graham.
Mr. Bouskas.
Mr. Hertz.
Christine Wilson.
Eric Gold.
Jan DeBakis.
No additional.
Leslie Totten.
Okay. Our final board is Tourism Development Commission, and there is one opening for a Scottsdale hotelier representative. The Tourism Development Commission advises the city council on matters concerning the expenditure of revenues from the transaction privilege tax or transit lodging or bed tax designated for tourism development. Special qualifications, as specified in the Scottsdale City Code, the Tourism Development Commission shall consist of representatives of the tourism industry in Scottsdale, including a minimum of four Scottsdale hoteliers, one member of the Scottsdale Convention and Visitors Bureau, and a balance from elements of the tourism industry. Steve Jun resigned in April and represented a Scottsdale hotelier. There is one Scottsdale hotelier represented position vacancy and one applicant. The applicant is Jesse Thompson. Begin with Councilman Durham.
Jesse Thompson.
There are no additional applicants. So our nominations are completed. This concludes our nomination process this evening. Individuals nominated will be contacted by city staff with additional information. And I would like to take this opportunity to sincerely thank everyone who applied to serve on a citizen advisory board or commission. Even if you were not nominated, your application will remain on file for one year for consideration at a future date if there are additional vacancies. Mayor, turn the meeting back over to you.
Excellent, thank you. Well, I will adjourn the regular portion of the city council meeting and now convene the special meeting. I call to order the June 13, 2023 city council special meeting. And note for the record that all council members and charter officers are present. The topic is the final adoption of the fiscal 2023-24 budget estimates. The presenter is Sonia Andrews, City Treasurer. And are there any questions? Well, excuse me, Councilwoman Whitehead, proceed.
I think we already had the presentation. So I motion to adopt ordinance number 4602, to adopt the final fiscal year 2023-24 budget estimates.
Second. Good. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote. Thank you, it's unanimous. At this point, I would request a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Please vote. It's going to show up.
We don't, we don't have.
Okay, we will just say.
We don't, we don't have any business with the other centers? The board directors?
That's, that's the next, that's.
Okay.
We are ending our official city council business right now. Okay, so say aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Okay, now we adjourn. At this point, we will begin a series of meetings regarding the, these several community facility districts. That is the DC Community Facilities District, McDowell Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District, Scottsdale Mountain Community Facilities District, Villa Linda Road Community Facilities District, Scottsdale Waterfront Commercial Community District Facilities District. So if you're involved in those, please stay. This, our official city business concluded. At this point, I will call to order the DC Community Facilities District. For the record, all the district board members and executive officers are in attendance for these five community facility district meetings. First order is the approval of minutes. The, do I have a motion to approve meeting minutes of Tuesday, June 7, 2022?
So moved.
And a second? I seconded. Okay, good. Moved and seconded. Please record your vote. Yes, unanimous. Next, order of business is to adopt a resolution number 59, which approves the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and orders a public hearing. Are there any questions from the board before I request a motion? Okay, I would also note that there is no public comment for this item. Accordingly, I would move to adopt resolution number 59, which approves the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and orders a public hearing, which you just completed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Please record your vote. Unanimous. Next order of business, I would conduct a public hearing on the district's fiscal year 2023-24 budget. I'm opening that hearing at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And I would move to adopt resolution number 60, which adopts the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and orders the tax levy for the district. Are there any questions on the board before I request a motion? Seeing none, I would, well, I made the motion, so do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please record your vote. Thank you, unanimous. Therefore, I will adjourn the DC Ranch CFD Board. And I request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, moved and seconded. And say aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we will convene the McDowell Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District. I will note that all the board members and executive officers are here. First order of business is approval of minutes. I make the motion to approve regular meeting minutes of Tuesday, June 7, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second. Please record your vote. It froze a little bit, but we're getting it. Okay, thank you. Want to try?
We can't just do ayes and quicken it?
Thank you. We, we're showing a recording because they're recording it. That's an aye, thank you. Next, we will adopt a resolution number 71, which approves, which approves the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and orders a public hearing. I open the public hearing and I close the public hearing. I don't see anyone wanting to speak. Are there any questions from the board before I request a motion? Therefore, I move to adopt resolution number 71, which approves the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and orders a public hearing. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please record your vote. Thank you. Next order of business, conduct a public hearing on the district's fiscal year 2023-24 budget. I'm opening the hearing. And I request public comment, seeing none, I therefore close the public hearing. I move to adopt resolution number 72, which adopts the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget. Any questions from the board before I request a motion? I move, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please record your vote. Thank you, unanimous. I request a motion to adjourn the McDowell Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District meeting. So moved and seconded.
Second.
Please record your vote. Thank you, unanimous. Next, I will convene the Scottsdale Mountain Community Facilities District. I'll call to order noting that the executive board and board members and executive are present. And with that, we will then move to the minutes. I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, June 7, 2022. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Great. Next order of business, adopt resolution number 74, which conveys all property owned by the district and assigns all obligations of the district, if any, to the city, and dissolves the city of Scotts, the Scottsdale Mountain Community Facilities District. Do I have any questions from the board members? Okay, before I request a motion, I move that we adopt resolution number 74, which conveys all the property owned by the district and assigns all obligations of the district to the city of Scottsdale.
Second.
Next, motion and a second, please record your vote.
Pardon me.
Thank you. Next, we will convene the Villa Linda Road Community Facilities District. I'm noting that the board members and the executive, executive officers are here. I would move to approve the meeting minutes of Tuesday, June 7, 2022. Thank you, I have a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please record your vote. Next order of business, adopt a resolution number 55, which approves the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and orders a public hearing. So I am opening a public hearing. And do I have any questions from the board? Okay, therefore, I will close that public hearing. And please record your vote.
Oh, motion, I move.
Thank you, thank you. And record your vote, thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Next order of business, conduct a public hearing on the district's fiscal year 2023-24 budget. I will open the public hearing. I call to the public, seeing no comment. Therefore, we will close the public comment on the district's fiscal year 2023-24 budget. Next item is to adopt the resolution number 56, which adopts the district's proposed fiscal 2023-24 budget. So I make that as a motion, do I have a second? Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Please record your vote.
I have a question, point of order. We can't, we can't, I'm not, I'm seeing a lot of, not seeing very much controversy. We can't batch these votes?
You know, and, and I don't believe there's.
Or if I could.
There are no headlines on that.
Okay, maybe city attorney won't allow us to do that.
Okay, then, at this point, I would ask to adjourn the Villa Linda Road CFD Board meeting. So I would request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move in a second, please record your vote. Unanimous, thank you. Next, we will convene the Scottsdale Waterfront Commercial Community Facility District. I call it to order noting that the board members of the district are here as well as the executive officers. I would, I move to approve the meeting minutes of Tuesday, June 7, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Please record your vote. Unanimous, thank you. Next order of business, adopt resolution number 42, which approves the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and orders a public hearing. I'm calling to the public, seeing none. Are there any questions from the board before I request a motion? No. So I request a motion to adopt resolution number 42, which approves the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget. Do I have a motion? I make that motion.
Okay, second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Please record your vote. Thank you, unanimous. Item number four, conduct a public hearing on the district's fiscal year 2023-24 budget. I'm opening a public hearing for that topic, requesting public comment, seeing none. Therefore, we will close public comment or public hearing on the district's fiscal budget. Next point of business is adopt resolution number 43, which adopts the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget and orders the tax levy for the district. Any questions from the board before I request a motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to adopt the resolution, and a second from Ms. Janik to adopt resolution number 43, which adopts the district's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget. Please register your vote. Thank you. At this point, I would move to adjourn the Scottsdale Waterfront Commercial CFD Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Please record your vote. Thank you very much, see you next year.
Are we adjourned? Adjourned?
Yes.
Yes.